Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you everyone so much for being here tonight. So we've got time set aside until 6:30 for input on the enrollment and transfer recommendations. So I think my understanding is we have two minutes each and we have, I'm sure, a number of folks signed up. So Ms. Houston, can you call down the first two names, please?
Sure, our first two speakers, Kathy Y. and Tomoyo Uemura.
Thanks so much for being here. And do we need to read the -- have the comment -- yeah. Yeah, so we've got two minutes each. The red light comes on after two minutes and we ask you to wrap up at that time. Thanks so much for being here tonight, we really appreciate it. If you want to go ahead and just say your name and spell your last name for the record.
So, my name for the record is Kathy Way. And I am here on behalf of Apano, the Asian Pacific American Network of Oregon. As an advocacy organization, we are very much interested in improving outcomes for members of our Asian and Pacific Islander communities. I know the school board is very familiar with our organization through our past work around some of the dual-language emergent programs for the Vietnamese community. We are also a proud partner of the Coalition for Communities of Color and together with them strongly support policies that will eliminate racial disparities within our education system. We are actually here today to just applaud the work of the SACIT in their review of enrollment and transfer policies and aligning these in particular with the district's racial equity educational policy. For many years, Apano has been advocating better outcomes for our students, especially of those who are English-language learners. The simple fact is that many of these students are the first in their family to attend an American educational system, such as myself in my own family. However, their chance for success is greatly diminished if they are not afforded appropriate language-based education. If the child in the family cannot succeed academically, then the family unit also suffers as a whole. I have seen this firsthand while working with many of the immigrant and refugee communities in my own community. And some of these kids have some of the worst graduation rates, some of the highest dropout rates. The model minority stereotype continues to plague our Asian community and has an adverse effect on our students. So while we know that there are small groups in the Asian community that do well academically, there are also many other groups such as recent immigrants, refugees, and also those living in poverty that do not succeed at very high rates. These experiences are often very lucked. So, am I -- sorry, is this time?
You can just go ahead and wrap up, that would be great.
Okay, so again, I want to just applaud the SACIT recommendations. In particular, with its current review and assessment of the focus option schools and other programs, we applaud the effort to expand dual-language emergent programs and we feel like there are many underserved communities that can truly benefit from some of the policy changes and the recommendations. And lastly, we also -- I'm sorry, kinda just getting through all my notes. But, in conclusion, I think we really just support some of the policy recommendations of the SACIT and we know that we want to continue building a relationship and a trusted relationship with community members as well as board members. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Tomoyo Uemura. I have a daughter attending Richmond Elementary School. I hope the school board will understand how difficult it is to retain cultural identity for all minorities in America, especially for second and third generations. Those who are not connected with their own heritage when they are growing up tends to regret this and feel they are missing out on something very important in later life. I have many friends of my generation who have both a Japanese appearance but attended English-only schools. Now they do not speak their native language or fully connect with their native culture. These friends feel ungranted and lost, as though they don't belong to either side. Full cultural enrichment cannot be obtained solely at home or at the occasional social gathering. It is common to hear parents say their children spoke Japanese until age five or six, but once they start to hang out with the English-speaking friends, the Japanese faded away. Emergent programs like that at Richmond provide more than the common core. It provides a true sense of cultural pride in community. Undercutting sibling preference in the lottery jeopardize this cultural connection for our entire community and within individual families. It poses an increased risk for younger children to grow up without fully embracing their cultural identity. More importantly, it risks undermining their natural connection to their siblings. SACIT's recommendations were made with very noble intentions that everyone agrees must be addressed. However, it doesn't seem that SACIT has considered the wide-ranging impact of destabilizing sibling connections at school. Will SACIT or will school be responsible for the identity crisis these children face? Will they be able to explain to one child why his or her sibling must go to a different school? Will they be able to rebuild the incredibly important connection between brothers and sisters? As we try to provide opportunity for all members of our community, let's not overlook one of the most important personal relationships in the lives of all children, their connection with their brothers and sisters. Thank you for your time and consideration. I hope you will make the best decision for the community.
Thank you very much. So, before -- oh, thank you very much. So I just needed before we go on with the next two folks, we have, I believe, interpreters in Spanish, Russian, Chinese, Somali, and Vietnamese. Could the interpreters make themselves known? So if anybody needs interpretation services, do you want to introduce yourselves? That would be great. Come on down. Great, thank you very much. So Ms. Houston, the next two?
Jess Thompson and Bonnie Richardson.
My name's Jess Thompson, J-E-S-S-T-H-O-N-P-S-O-N. Dear Board Directors, thank you for taking time to consider both the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfers Recommendation and the Superintendent's Final Proposal on Enrollment and Transfer. This proposal represents the very best of what Portland has to offer. The charge to align our current enrollment and transfer policy with the racial educational equity policy. The coming together through SACIT of focus option families, charter school administrators, neighborhood families, sped families, tag families, policy experts, and more, to collectively study a problem and develop solutions. A belief that the way we do business is not providing equitable access to educational opportunities or outcomes to our most historically underserved students. A multi-year study of historical, current, and future data that is informed by past, current, and possible policy changes, and a deep sense of urgency to make right past wrongs. I applaud all who worked tirelessly to make Portland a better place to live for all of our residents. I know you are deep in thought about these issues and I know you are studying the research and proposals. I hope the board will pass the proposal. If you do not, I have a few words to share. I believe it would be better then if we did not have a racial educational equity policy. For most communities, systems are designed to produce the outcomes they produce, and so it is in Portland. The only difference is, we know better. We actually have a racial educational equity policy. For communities without such progressive lens with which to view policy, they can argue when faced with inequities that they don't see them, that they aren't that bad, that it would be terrible to make changes that would cause discomfort to others, or that it is too complicated or difficult to make change to healthcare, educational, criminal justice, housing, or other political or government systems. I get that. Those communities are still clinging to a race-blind utopia that issues any discussion of public policy and historically underserved students. If you vote against the proposal, you are in effect voting against the racial educational equity policy. A vote against the suggested changes to the enrollment policy says to our historically underserved students, "We know that our current enrollment and transfer policies create inequitable access and outcomes, and we don't care. We're not going to change policy to create more equitable educational system for you. Please pass the policies."
Thank you.
My name is Bonnie Richardson and I'm a full-time working parent and so is my husband. We have three children, all through the Japanese Magnet Program, one in ninth grade, one in fourth grade, and one in second grade. And I come here to kind of share that experience with you and my perspective. And to do that, I just have to give a little bit about my background. I'm half-Japanese. My mother is an immigrant from Japan. She's first generation. I grew up in the public school system but not here, and we did speak Japanese, as somebody earlier was saying, as I was growing up with my two siblings. But when we went to school, we were discouraged from speaking Japanese and there was no language program. Of course, this is in the 70s. When I moved here, and I also had my mother move here as well, we were very happy to be part of this Japanese community, which is a wonderful community. Now, the wonderful thing about this particular program was to be able to offer that to my children and to other people who have children who want to have the same culture and language. So we've been able to do that and it's been very fortunate. But what is so important that I've realized is to make sure that we keep the culture and the language as part of our family, so all three of my children could have that. If we were denied that opportunity, it would be very difficult for families like mine. And I will say that often in the Japanese community, I can speak this for my mother, who would never get up here to speak, it's very difficult from that cultural perspective to get up here and to tell you how she feels or how we feel in the community. But it is important, from a cultural perspective, to have the language stay with our family. And now, I'm happy to say that my children are more fluent than I am. I cannot read or write, although I can speak a little. And they do speak and read and write with my mom every day. So I encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Next, we have Mary Owenby and Rita Moore.
It's Marcy Owenby, and I'm a mother to five students in the PPS schools. My oldest is 12 and a seventh grader and my youngest is in -- my youngest student is in kindergarten. They attend two different schools. One is our Neighborhood K-5 School and the other is Access Academy. So what I want to speak to tonight is the transfer policy that specifically affects sibling preference. I am a family that because of access to specific sibling preference already am divided among two schools, so I'm going to speak to my personal experience here. I strongly believe that access to educational opportunities for low-income and typically underserved communities needs to improve. However, I believe the proposed policy change giving preference to low-income families over siblings will cause more harm than it has potential for good. Here are my reasons. Firstly, many focus option schools, because they draw from all of PPS and not one neighborhood, work to develop a sense of community. Shifting policy away from sibling preference will result in dividing families between two or more schools. This not only stresses individual families, it causes a loss of parental support to the schools as families struggle to be in multiple places and are unable to fully commit to one school. Parental support and strong community are vital to our school's success. Secondly, PPS families with a child in a focus option school or program expect that siblings will receive preference. If this policy change passes, it will betray the promise made at enrollment. We need a district-wide climate of trust and support. The policies a family enters with should be honored. Thirdly, I appreciate the work that SACIT has done to address these sensitive issues. Unfortunately, to create real equality, we need to create more opportunity for students to receive the high-quality education they desire. May I finish? The proposed policy change will not actually create more opportunities for more students. It merely manipulates demographics. To create true equity, we need to expand and replicate successful schools and programs. And we need outreach and accessible transportation. Those will be key to making these opportunities available to all students. I believe one of the most equitable things, one of the most equitable actions PPS can take is to affirm the value of every family and school community by keeping sibling preference a high priority as we work to improve the quality education, quality of education for all students.
Thank you.
My name is Rita Moore, M-O-R-E, and as you probably know, I'm a member of SACIT. I'd like to focus my remarks on the scope of the package that SACIT has produced. Thus far, we've tended to -- most of the discussion has been focused on a relatively small portion of the package. And I think it's important to remind everybody that this package was intended to stabilize neighborhood schools and to restore neighborhood schools to the heart of their neighborhoods and the heart of the district. I'd also like to remind everybody that SACIT was convened originally in 2008, following a 2006 audit of the transfer system that showed numerous problems, that the transfer system at that point had exacerbated the problems related to gentrification, had increased concentration of poverty. The audit was not flattering about the transfer policy. When SACIT was convened in 2008, we focused on high school redesign. Our mandate was to advocate for the stability and sustainability of the high school system. We didn't use an equity lens specifically because at that point a policy had not been adopted, but we were very committed to ensuring equitable access to quality education. This latest iteration of the committee more formally applied the racial educational equity lens, but it's notable that SACIT's diagnosis of the problem and our recommendations for a solution are essentially the same as they were in 2009 and 2010. Neighborhood schools are and should be the heart of this district. The vast majority of students attend neighborhood schools. We need to have a system that supports neighborhood schools, provides stability in enrollment. It's the foundation for school improvement. It provides for community stability for the kids who, especially the kids who need it most. And you now have an opportunity to undo some of the negative impacts of the experiments that have occurred in the last 15 years in Portland public schools. And I would ask you to support the entire package. Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Brian Kimura and Gabrielle Bolivar.
Hello, my name is Brian Kimura. Thank you for hearing our comments. I'm here to express my concerns about the proposed lottery restructuring. And as a third-generation Japanese-American, as a parent of a kindergarten student enrolled at Richmond Elementary, with a younger sibling expected to enter kindergarten in 2016, and also as a board member of the Oregon NIKI Endowment, a nonprofit Japanese-American civil rights organization that preserves and educates the public of the history of Japanese-Americans. At the forefront of this organization's mission is our efforts to preserve and strengthen the Japanese and Japanese-American community in and around Portland. From my experience with ONE, Oregon NIKI Endowment, the Richmond families have served us a foundation for the Japanese-American and Japanese community within Portland. Immersing children and families linguistically and culturally has boosted the growth of the community as a whole. Preserving traditions and cultures, introducing new traditions, and bringing families together from different backgrounds. We have seen growth due to the parents' involvement with their children's activities and then becoming engaged after seeing how vibrant the community truly is. When it comes to enrollment, the enrollment lottery at Richmond, the reprioritizing of sibling priorities should not be viewed lightly. Community starts with family, and engaging families from different backgrounds is difficult when one child has an opportunity to learn a new language and the other does not. When the language is practiced at home with other siblings, the language becomes a household custom and strengthens family bonds. But when no other family member speaks the same language, the students do not have a chance to practice. Without family support and siblings studying the same languages, the students enrolled in the program may start to question the point of learning it. It also creates a disparity between siblings when one is enrolled in a specialized program and the other is not. The enrolled student can talk to their classmates, but outside of school and home, it becomes a virtually meaningless language. Community is where it matters. My child, who is currently enrolled in kindergarten at Richmond, has a younger sibling, and my wife and I are concerned about our youngest daughter not being admitted. My youngest daughter is learning Japanese in preschool, and it is important to us as a family to have her continue learning Japanese with her sister at Richmond. Our daughter is in kindergarten, loves the language, but there is limited opportunity for her to practice at home. My wife and I do not speak the language very well, but are committed to having our children learn. We understand the importance of being able to speak and practice the language inside the household.
Mr. Kimura, could you wrap up, please? I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll be real quick. It pains me to think that the proposed policy would prevent my daughters from being able to develop their language skills together. We all have stressful lives and are looking to simplify. Separate school commutes for families will add unnecessary stress to all. With two children at different schools, this would put a huge burden on our lives and take our children to different areas of the city, and it will complicate morning drop-offs and pickups. An unnecessary stress to any family.
Thank you, we need to wrap up because we have more folks.
Well, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much. My name is Gabrielle Mercedes Bolivar, B-O-L-I-V-A-R. PPS Board of Director, Superintendent, and Student Rep.
On June 13, 2011, the PPS Board of Directors made a historic move and voted unanimously to approve Board Resolution 4459, the Racial Educational Equity Policy. On February 25, 2013, the PPS Board of Directors unanimously approved Board Resolution Number 4718, the Jefferson Pre-K Through A Cluster Enrollment Balancing, referred to as GEB. Item number four of this resolution specifically states, "The Board directs staff to develop and recommend a process for a comprehensive review of school boundary district-wide and policies related to student assignment and transfer to better align with the racial educational equity policy and promote strong capture rates in academic programs at every grade level. As a result of this Board Directive, Superintendent Smith charged SACIT with aligning the enrollment and transfer policies to the racial education equity policy to better serve historically underserved students. Our family supports the recommendation as presented by Superintendent Smith to the School Board on November 25, 2014. A policy is a guiding framework of values, a high-level overall plan embracing the general goals of a governmental body. Our neighborhood schools are the strength of our community, a place where all students should belong and be welcomed, including siblings. Ending the past practice of neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers will strengthen the consistency of enrollment year-over-year, lead to the better allocation of staffing, and inform the District-wide Boundary Review Advisory Committee. We recognize that there are hardships that can exist for a student or family that require a petition to attend a school outside of their neighborhood school. We support strengthening of the petition process and alignment to the racial educational equity policy to better serve our historically underserved students. We support the review of identified PPS focus option alternative schools consistent with current policy and to further review of this policy and align it to the racial educational equity policy. We support the recommendation to change a lottery preference for focus option schools. This recommendation directly aligns to our racial educational equity policy and will over time lead to an increase in the diversity of focus option schools to better reflect the demographics of our district. We support students staying to the highest grade of the school if they have been placed in a special education program and have transitioned into general education. This aligns current policy with the racial educational equity policy and historically underserved students. Our special education students have the lowest graduation outcomes of all student groups. All students have a right to belong in their school community, many that were not placed there by choice but for access for specialized services. Policy changes are not the end, as we know from the ongoing work of our racial educational equity policy. It is the first step. The steps that follow will include investment to the procedural practice and implementation changes that will occur next. As a former PPS alum and a current PPS parent, we have been waiting our lifetime to see these changes and appreciate that the district is finally arriving. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last two speakers, Scott Bailey and Nadia Martinez.
Once again, I get four minutes?
Actually not, because we have two left of the entire --
I'm right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Totally right here. I just have my children. It's interesting. Am I going first?
If you're good to go.
I'm gonna say, please watch my two-year-old back there. Hi, my name is --
And they're off.
My name is Nadia Martinez-Chantrey. I'm a former PPS student. I went to Graut, I went to Hosford, and then I transferred to go to Lincoln. And I had an exceptionally hard time there with all the privileged white students and I dropped out. I am now a mother of three children. I live in North Portland, and my son goes to Sittin. And I'm not going to bore you with all the stats because I'm assuming you all read the reports, because I read them, and I'm pretty busy. And, yes, vote. Vote on everything that Ms. Smith has to say, because it's important. That my children are all going to go to an excellent school, we need the resources, we need people to stay, we need to show that it's a great place to be, and I want to be there. I am also a PPS employee, and I work at Buckman. And I see the resources there and what the students there get and what my son does not get at Sittin. And I can't do anything about it except come here and say, please, help us. I'm here representing Sittin. There's nobody else here that looks like me, there's nobody else here from that neighborhood because it's incredibly difficult to get here. I'm here with all three of my children. It's a mess, it's always a mess. We all have work, we all have things to do. That's it, because I'm going to respect you all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can I start now? Okay, my name is Scott Bailey, I'm a SACIT member. I'm going to be wearing two hats in two minutes. Good luck. A couple of things. It's an obscure line in the SACIT report, but I want to tell you what the line is and what the intent behind it can be. Pardon me. Quote, "A possible way to mitigate both of these concerns is for PPS to investigate whether qualitative criteria should be added to the application process for focus option schools." And a qualitative criteria that we had in mind was cultural heritage. And I think that would address many of the concerns that were brought here tonight. That goes beyond whether somebody actually speaks Japanese language, for example, or not. Secondly, I want to say we have a lot of inequities in our country, and we have a system that, here in Portland, that makes our inequities worse. Worse around race, worse around income, worse around special needs children. You have a chance to correct that. This has been out there for a long time. It's time to act now. My question for you is whether you're going to go halfway or all the way. The Oregonian has editorialized three times against the SACIT recommendations. Almost identical editorials three or four years ago, right around high school rebalancing. "It's going to be a disaster, parents will flee, blah, blah, blah." Guess what? That didn't happen. Why? Because you stepped in, you did what needed to do to be done to strengthen neighborhood high schools, and it's been a great success. Finally, I will switch hats. As President of Community and Parents for Public Schools, our board voted unanimously in favor of the Superintendent's package. And we want to thank you for applying the racial equity lens to your work.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. And over to Chair Knowles and the regular meeting.
So is everybody staying? Okay. Want to start? I thought a bunch of people moving out of the room. Okay. There'll be public comments during this part of the meeting as well. Have you signed up for public comment? Okay. Hang on. Just a second here. Okay. This study session of the Board of Education for December 9, 2014, is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. While our study sessions are generally limited to our receipt of information from staff and discussions of that information and review of resolutions prior to a vote, at times we conduct votes during study sessions, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. So the first thing on our agenda is public comment. So, at this time, Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We have six.
I know we have at least one. So while those people are coming -- oh, go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
Our first two speakers are Christine Klein and Febe Armentez.
Okay. So while they're coming forward, I'll go ahead and read the instructions for public comment. Thank you for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the board. We value public input, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen and reflect on your comments. The board will not respond to any comments or questions during the public comment period, but we've asked our board manager, Roseanne Powell, who is standing up here on the side, to follow up with issues raised during public testimony. You can meet with her, and she will take your information if you'd like to talk to us further. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. So you have three minutes. The lights in front of you, please start by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, the green light will go on in front of you. When you have one minute left, they're right up here. When you have one minute left, the yellow light will go on, and when that time is up, the red light will come on, and a buzzer will sound, and we ask that you wrap it up within a couple of seconds after that. And we sincerely appreciate your input, and thank you so much for being here tonight. You may go ahead.
So I am Christine Klein. Last name spelled K-L-E-I-N. Good evening. My name is Christine Klein, as I said, and I teach first-grade Spanish immersion at Atkinson Elementary School. Superintendent Smith and members of the school board, I want to speak to you about the value of the 2014 Courageous Conversations Summit, in which I participated in October. I share these comments as a white woman. My race is the dominant racial group that has created the current system of education that is not serving students of all races. Equity work is difficult heart work. As a white woman, I have found this work to be emotional, humbling, and empowering. It has demanded that I make adaptive changes in my practice, which means that I start with myself through examination of my beliefs, that I recognize my privilege as a white person, and that I identify my personal participation in the perpetuation of institutionalized racism. This process for my heart and belief system has taken time, guidance, and learning. I have been a supportive and active participant in equity work since 2010 on my school's spell and care teams, but until I went to this summit, I was not ready to fully integrate this arduous work in my practice. Each day, I become stronger and a more effective teacher to all my students, but my journey with this work must never stop. I believe that as a white person, I must receive continued support and opportunity so that I can help eradicate the racialized achievement gap. Equity is not solely an issue for people of color or for those who work with students of color. Equity work is for absolutely everyone. As a white person, it is crucial that I identify my role in supporting the oppressive systems in place, or the achievement gap will never be closed. Studies show that one of the most powerful indicators for student success is a healthy sense of self. I believe that the equity work that I have had the honor of participating in has helped me to develop a sense of self that enables me to reach each of my students. I am grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you.[806.06][806.06](APPLAUSE).
My name is Febe Armentez, A-R-M-E-N-D-A-R-I-Z. I teach seventh and eighth grade Language Arts and Social Studies and Spanish Immersion at Beach School. An opinion that has been shared publicly in our community is that attending the Summit for Courageous Conversations was a waste of money. For that reason, I am here. My own perspective, shaped by my racial identity as a Latina, is that using my professional development funds to attend this conference was a worthwhile investment. When I think of all the PD available to me, this conference has had the deepest, most far-reaching impact. I want to take you to my classroom, my second-year teaching, and look with me at a line forming by the door. The reading specialist is taking students who are one or two grade levels behind. What I see, what we all see, is that all the brown and black students are lining up, and most students left are white. I remember looking at that line and asking myself, how am I going to change this? And how do I make these changes systemic? At a personal level, the conference deepened my understanding of race, and I gained a stronger sense of my identity as a leader for equity. At a school level, I have been able to bring back what I learned and lead not only in my equity team, but also in other committees and in conversations with colleagues. At a district level, my contribution is a part of making this work sustainable by building on the momentum of the conference and equipping other teachers to become leaders for equity. Because of the conference, I am confident in my belief that I am not alone in this work and that I have the support of many educators in this district who are struggling with the same issue in their classrooms. In talking to colleagues and leaders across our country, I was able to see how my work in the classroom fits into the work that we do as a district in educating children, our next generation of citizens, so they can lead for equity in our city and in our nation. Thank you for your support for this work.[932.82][932.82](APPLAUSE).
Thank you for sharing those.
Next, we have Emily Grant Molina and Colleen Smith.
Hi.
You can go ahead.
Okay. My name is Emily Grant Molina. The last name is G-R-A-N-T space M-O-L-I-N-A. Members of the board, I'm here to speak about the Courageous Conversations Summit. I have been an ESL and dual-language teacher at East and West Sylvan for the past seven years. Attendance at the summit was an extremely beneficial experience for me as a dual-language teacher and also as a member of the equity team in my building. I've been through the Beyond Diversity training, and I promoted equity in my building over the last two years, but nothing has come as close in helping me feel prepared to do this work as I felt when I left the summit. Engaging in courageous conversations and promoting equity in our schools is not a simple, clear-cut task. It's a personal process that we go through as teachers to explore our own background and the filters that we use every day, which are then communicated to our students through the decisions that we make in our classrooms. For a person of color, working with students of color, race, and equity are constantly present in one's thoughts and procedures in the classroom. For me, though, as a white woman, working in a school with predominantly white students, I knew it was important, but I didn't realize until I was at the summit how incredibly imperative it is. I was able to leave with the confidence and tools to engage other white people in my building, in this conversation, while always keeping at the center of my focus how I can serve students of color better in my classroom and also in my school community. More than just the role in my building, though, this work has put my concept of how I can continue to work with dual-language teachers across the district into clearer focus. With the expansion of dual-language programs and the continued opportunities provided through that department to collaborate and strengthen my connections with schools all over Portland, I see how important this work is to our district in closing the achievement gap and also supporting native language development. I came back inspired to engage fully in equity in my building with, quote, "all deliver at speed," end quote, as Glenn Singleton put it. As well as expanding my participation district-wide, working with Debbie, Michael, Marisol, and Alma, recently I was accepted as a participant in the Language Arts Adoption Team, and I know that what I gained at the summit will influence the work that I do to support that curriculum adoption. If anyone were to ask me if it was worth the money spent to go to New Orleans, I would not hesitate in saying yes. Not only was it a life-changing experience for me, but my hope is that it will change the educational outcomes of my students and that I will be able to support programs and teachers across the district with what I've learned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1127.15][1127.15](APPLAUSE).
Next, we have Laura Stepp and Atsuko Andu.
Oh. I can't hear my voice. I'm going to go first. Do you want to go first? Hi, my name is Laura Stepp, and I'm the mother of two sons, age fifteen and eleven. My oldest completed the full Odyssey K-8 experience for the Odyssey Program at Aguirre School, and my youngest is in sixth grade there, so he's in his seventh year. And I have also played a leadership role there on the Parent Teacher Governance Group for multiple years. I was the chair for three years and the secretary for one, so obviously I'm passionate about the program. I'm here tonight to read to you some excerpts from a letter that represents what we consider to be the collective response of the Odyssey community to the Sackett Committee and its recommendations. Like all of the focus programs in the city of Portland, the recent report and recommendations have been pretty hot in terms of our debate, and we gathered the community for several open forum sessions to collect our thoughts and opinions, which this sort of represents. We obviously care a great deal about our own children, but we are also a very tight community. We care a great deal about the experience of all the kids that are in our program, but also the kids of Portland who we think deserve educational options that deliver repeatable results. I hope our point of view influences you today. So first, we want to talk about those areas where we want to endorse and support the Sackett recommendations. First, our community was pleased to see the superintendent's most recent updates and revisions to the original recommendations, and are particularly heartened that the options that the concerns were heard around the issue of sibling preference, which of course was a big deal here tonight. We want to make sure that sibling preference does play a role in populating our school, certainly for the current committed families. We welcome and believe in the value of diversity in all of our schools and certainly can get behind the idea that we would have balanced and representative representation. In the Odyssey Program, while of course we're realistic about neighborhood demographics, we're the only program in southwest Portland, so that makes us a little bit different. We definitely support Sackett's findings that the complexity of the lottery and outreach are big barriers to establishing a pipeline of diverse families into our program. We've talked about it for many years in our Parent Teacher Group, and we welcome the district's active support to simplify the lottery and facilitate citywide marketing to publicize the excellent educational opportunity that focus programs provide, including our own. Our other opinions, we're concerned a little bit that Sackett's recommendations seem to be based on this idea that focus programs are tailored only to some of the community and not all. We do not believe that is our experience as parents in this program, and we believe our program is uniquely suited to diverse classrooms. Our teachers' team teach, our classrooms are multi-grade, and our kids learn in teams where they mentor each other and learn a lot about the different learning styles and paces of kids. So we think it's uniquely good at actually adapting to diverse environments and also has a heavy experiential component, which also addresses lots of different learning needs. We think that's very special about us. In addition, our curriculum focuses on uniquely analyzing history through the lenses of race, gender, culture, and historical time. We look at race and gender through all sorts of lenses, literature, and activities, and again, we think it's uniquely suited to a diverse community. Finally, we could say a lot of other things, but we think our results speak for themselves. We think the Odyssey Program has a unique methodology that could be replicated in other programs, including neighborhood schools, and we are unique in that we sit with a neighborhood school and have helped make that school survive and not be closed. So we think that's also unique, and we'd like to see more of that in the city of Portland.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1366.42][1366.42](APPLAUSE).
So instead of Atsuko Andu, this is Anne Scheeman. A N-S-C-H-E-I-M-A-N. We under. I'm a second-grade Japanese teacher at Richmond Elementary School. We understand that you have been receiving many letters and emails from parents of Richmond's Japanese immersion program regarding proposed changes to the enrollment and transfer lottery system. Please allow me to speak from the perspective of a teacher and know that I'm representing many others at our school. I would like to talk to you about the practice of co-enrolling siblings and how it is beneficial to everyone. First, let me say as a teacher that we honor the district's priority to close the achievement gap among PPS students. We know that learning a second language is a powerful asset for a student's future, and we welcome this opportunity to extend the gift of language to all children. In the most current proposal regarding lotteries for our school, enrollment slots for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch will come before the slots of siblings. We understand that this is intended to close the achievement gap, but that goal cannot be realized if the program falters. Please consider what our school needs in order to continue to thrive and best serve all of its students, including those whom are historically underserved. The practice of drawing siblings early in the lottery is a benefit to underserved students in two ways. First, younger siblings of students in the program almost always arrive in kindergarten with a strong language foundation. This is acquired through years of living around their siblings who sing, speak, and read aloud at home. This may seem to only be an advantage for siblings. It is, in fact, an advantage for the whole class, as it raises the overall language competency, which allows the class to achieve higher levels of language and content than they would otherwise. Our pre-K program, which will be discontinued next year, has shown that having a substantial portion of the class with language experience raises the level of achievement for all of our students. Siblings, which generally make up a third of each class, often arrive in kindergarten with great enthusiasm for the language due to their family connection, and this enthusiasm spreads to their peers. Second, assuring families that siblings will be able to co-enroll provides a needed stability in our enrollment numbers and in our community. A unique aspect of one-way immersion programs is that when we lose a student, it is nearly impossible to find another for that slot. To enroll, they would need to be a native speaker, which we capture the majority of in kindergarten. Many of our families have strong desires to keep their children together, and we worry that parents who are unsure if their younger siblings would be able to enroll will keep their family together by leaving. This would open slots that we won't be able to fill, weakening and endangering our program. We cannot best serve students if our program crumbles. It's not enough to give families vague assurances that siblings will probably be able to enroll. When families enrolled in our program, they understood that their younger children would be able to join. It is not surprising that these families are feeling angry and distrustful upon hearing that the district may not honor that understanding. Families which are stressed and uncertain cannot focus on making school communities great for everyone. Please show teachers and families that you care not only about how policies look on paper, but about how the students you aim to serve will actually be affected. Sorry, let me start that sentence again. Please show teachers and families that you care not only about how priorities look on paper, but about how the students you aim to serve will actually be affected by the changes you implement. Thank you for your time.[1564.13][1564.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.[1566.13][1566.13](APPLAUSE). Thank you to everybody. We appreciate you being here tonight. Pardon me?
So I'd like to present, you know, this speech, because all the teachers wanted to come, but couldn't make it.
Okay.
So we collected all the signatures.
Sure.
From the teachers, and I'd like to present.
Go ahead, and you can just give it to Roseanne. She's right behind you there. There you go.
Okay, thank you very much. And I hope that, I really, really hope that the most of the teachers actually teach these cases, will be the body. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much.[1604.13][1604.13](APPLAUSE). Thank you, everybody, who came to testify tonight. Okay. Next on our agenda is a discussion around the Males of Color Pledge. And as a representative of our board on the Council of Great City Schools, excuse me, I have a little cold tonight. I'm trying to suck a cough drop, and so I may have some trouble speaking. Anyway, I was honored to support the Males of Color Pledge on behalf of Portland Public Schools, traveling to Washington, D.C. and meeting with President Obama last summer. Tonight, the board will discuss our own resolution in support of the Males of Color Pledge. Superintendent Smith, would you like to?
Yes, I'll just do a little background. So as Chair Knowles just described, back in July, we traveled with sixty other of the large urban school districts in the country and stood with President Obama as he rolled out My Brother's Keeper and signed on to a pledge to support specific strategies for success for males of color in our urban school system. We then came back together in October, I believe, for a day and a half with those same school districts, looking at how each of us build our action plans. And so Portland Public Schools has been involved in our overall strategic plan that looks at all of our students, our equity plan that looks at how we're specifically developing strategies to serve our students of color, and then right now, we're specifically looking at how we disaggregate our data by gender and look at that gender gap and by language so that strategies. And we're asking every one of our principals to really look at the males of color in your school and how are you developing specific strategies, very personally looking at individual students to ensure their success. This is also partnering with Mayor Charlie Hales, who is doing a Black Male Success Work Group, so we're really looking at how are we aligning the work that we're doing. And tonight, this is part of a conversation here in light of what's happened in Ferguson, what's happened in New York, what's happened in Cleveland, what's happened in Baltimore in terms of males of color. We wanted to reaffirm our work as a district in supporting success for our males of color here in Portland Public Schools, so.
So within our packet, there is a resolution that we will be voting on at the next board meeting. I'd just like to take a moment to read that, and I think I'm going to ask Bobby to do it, because you were interested. I mean, you've been working on this as well, and I have cough drops, so. Have you got a card?
Portland Public Schools' Males of Color Pledge. Recitals. Recitals: In 2011, the Portland Public Schools Board of Education adopted a racial educational equity policy that states, quote, "Closing this achievement gap while raising achievement for all students is the top priority of the Board of Education, the superintendent, and all district staff. Race must cease to be a predictor of student achievement and success," end quote. Two, to operationalize the racial educational equity policy, the board reviews and receives regular reports on annual action plans. Three, the district has adopted three priorities to promote student achievement and success. One, all students will be reading a benchmark by the end of third grade. Two, reducing overall exclusionary discipline and eliminating disproportionality. Three, accelerating high school graduation and completion rates. So recital number four. The district is developing an action plan in support of the Council of Great City Schools' Males of Color Pledge, which is a collective commitment to improve educational outcomes for boys and young men of color and is part of the president's My Brothers Keeper initiative. Recital five. The board agrees with the Council of Great City Schools in its statement that, quote, "On its face, the tragic events in Ferguson concerned the police and the local community. But ultimately, this is a case about how America's institutions, including our schools, respect the well-being, rights, and futures of all of our young people. This broader reading of Ferguson extends to how our schools define and mete out justice and ensure that all students have access to the highest standards and opportunities," end quote. So the resolved, A, the board remains committed to the intent and purpose of the racial educational equity policy and its call for urgency to address the achievement gap in our schools and across the nation. B, Portland Public Schools is one of 67 urban school districts nationwide to sign on to the Males of Color Pledge. We support the attached pledge by America's Great City Schools around males of color. And C, the board will continue to work with our city, county, and community partners to support all students, specifically to increase the males of color who are succeeding academically and socially in our schools and are on track to succeed in high school, college, career, and as contributing members of our community.
Okay. Discussion for board members, thoughts? Director Bilal.
I don't have any prepared thoughts. I just want to appreciate our reaffirming of our work and specifically calling out the obvious events of the past couple of months, although this is nothing new. It's just gotten a lot of press, and so I appreciate us calling that out and standing in solidarity to say that we, as the leaders of a big institution, are responsible for making sure the outcomes of all of our students, but especially those who have been disproportionately affected, change for the better.
I would add, you know, I think when No Child Left Behind, the only good thing really about No Child Left Behind is that it asked us to look at differentiated data around our students, and that actually was enormously helpful in everyone across the nation understanding the achievement gap and what it is and when it starts and how to try to address it. What the No Child Left Behind Act didn't do was to ask us to look at the difference in achieving between boys and girls. And I think it's something that we at Portland Public Schools have started a couple of years ago to pay attention to, and I know for me, it became very obvious when I was, I don't know, six, eight years ago, starting to take my kids on college tours and suddenly realizing that among most of the colleges that we visited, 60% of the students were girls, 40% of the students were boys. And there was a real obvious sign there that we were doing something wrong at the K-12 level and leaving our boys behind. I think by specifically looking at our black boys, it gives us an opportunity to figure out where we have the most potential to change our system. And when we change our system for black boys, it is going to have an impact all the way up and through the system, but that needs to be a place that we measure and look at first because, again, like on these college tours, where we could see that the boys were falling behind in American education systems, you see the black boys falling behind, oftentimes Native American boys falling behind in others, but it's the black boys that we've seen kind of across the system, across the nation, where we're struggling the most, and we can't allow that to happen anymore.
Others? Matt?
Thank you, and I want to thank my colleagues who put the effort into moving this resolution forward. One of the things that I think is really important about the role that we play on the board is how we set the tone and how we create a culture within our district. And the other piece of that, too, is how we're guided by the community in which we represent. But I think this is a, this is something that needs to be, if it isn't already, needs to be directly in front of our faces. The fact that, and this is a fact, but the fact that we can predict student achievement by race in our district is humiliating. It's terrifying. It's embarrassing and disappointing, and all of these other things that, all these other words that aren't ready for prime time. But to me, it is the reason why we have students of color, boys of color, coming into our schools, you know, to use this term, and I've heard, you know, I've said this before, but as outsiders, that this is a place that I am not, I am not going to be successful except if I'm exceptional, and the only way to be exceptional is not to behave like my community behaves or like my culture behaves. And that, to me, is completely unacceptable. So this is a, to me, this, you know, resolution is a symbol, but I hope it's also something that sets a tone, and it sets a tone for a district and a community and a city, and hopefully a state in terms of our education, our relationship to educational institutions around the state, that this is something we have to pay attention to because, as our racial educational equity policy says, it is not acceptable for us to be able to determine achievement by race, and that can happen. And it may not be happening with your student or your child, but it is happening around our city. So I'm obviously in full support of this, and I'm excited to be, to be a part of it. I think the other very small piece, too, that's worth mentioning is that this in no way diminishes the other areas that we need to consider, too, whether that is the gender gap, whether that is income, challenges that we have around students with a diversity of income. These are issues that we need to be dealing with on and addressing on a parallel track to this. But this is something that we can do, and we can do now, and as a community, I think Portland is prepared, equipped to do it. It's just a matter of us showing the effort towards it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Matt said so well.
Yeah. Tom? Yeah? Ena?
Yeah. In light of Ferguson, a lot of students have been reacting around the district, too, and I think that we, as district leaders, coming out and stating that we, too, are working for the same thing, that a lot of our black student unions have been having courageous conversations during lunch. I got to attend one, and it was great hearing students discuss these issues that we, too, are being faced with. I think that us coming out, showing that we are in full support of our black students and all students is great, so I'm in full agreement with this.
It's good to hear that. Ruth, are you, no? Steve, anything? You okay? Okay. I would just tag along with Matt and may comment about how this helps us set the tone here in the district. I think especially as a board, it's important for us to set that tone. I know that when we adopted the racial educational equity policy, it made a huge difference to our staff and to their ability to do the things that they needed to do within their own classrooms and within our schools to make sure that all of our students were achieving, and I, you know, we just have to help set that tone. And it's not only for our staff and our schools who are setting the tone, but we also, I think, our leaders in this, in our community, with our city. Happy to see that the mayor, I've heard the mayor's coming out, working hard on a similar resolution, and happy to see that, and all of our other partners that we work with. So I'm excited to have this come forward next week and looking forward to voting on it. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you so much. Excuse me. Our, next thing on our agenda is our comprehensive annual financial report. We discussed this briefly at our meeting on December 2nd. Superintendent Smith, would you like to go ahead and introduce the item?
I would. So this is a follow-up to our last meeting. I'm introducing Cherie Lewis, who is the Director of Accounting, and we'll be introducing our auditors to hear directly from them. Cherie.
Thank you, Chair Knowles, and the board, and the audience, and hopefully I don't clear my mouth like the last time. Somebody else is speaking, so it might be more effective. I'd like to introduce our auditors, Talbot Corvola-Murk, TKW, that's most people, and this is the partner, Tim Gillette, and he's going to present our financial statement in relation to what the auditors have to say.
Thank you for being here.
Great. Thanks, Cherie. Thanks for having me, everybody. It's nice to see you again, or some of you it's the first time, but many of you I've seen before. I am Tim Gillette, partner with Talbot Corvola-Murk, or TKW, that works, too, here to present the comprehensive annual financial report. I know you went through it last week, so I'm going to move pretty quickly. I think usually that's what people want, but I'm happy to answer questions, spend more time, go into it more deeply. I mean, this is what I do, but I understand. Anyway, so let me move on. Let's get right into it. It's a big report. I mean, it's what, a couple hundred pages or something? Maybe not quite.
It's a few.
Quite a few. But most of it is yours. Really, my part is a very small part. So, and I want to mostly talk about my part, which starts on the number page one, even though it's about 20 pages into here. The independent auditor's report. There's a prescribed format that this goes through. We talk about the fact that we've audited the statements. We talk about management's responsibility, what's our responsibility. The good part is down at the bottom of that first page where we start talking about the opinions, or our opinions, which is really what you hire us for, is to give our opinion on the financial statements. And we give you a, what's now called an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the U.S., et cetera. So the statements are fairly presented in our opinion. The report goes on, actually goes on for another couple of pages. There is a lot more than just the basic financial statements in the comprehensive annual financial report, and we talk about our responsibility for each of those parts. So the next part talks about required supplementary information. There's some parts of that, management's discussion and analysis, and the schedule of funding process, not part of the basic financials, but they're still required information to be in there. But we don't express an opinion on those. Our audit doesn't extend to those things. Then there's another group of required supplementary information, the budgetary comparison information for the general fund, the grant fund, pers rate stabilization reserve fund. Again, they're not part of the basic financials, although they are required financial information, but we do enough work on those that, in our opinion, those statements are fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements taken as a whole. And we talk about other information that's in the report, and it's listed in the table of contents. I won't list it off, but it's the supplementary information, and again, we do enough work on that that we express our opinion that it's fairly stated in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. Now, there are a couple of pieces, the introductory and the statistical sections, that we don't do any audit work on, although we do read them, but we don't express an opinion on them. Third page really is referring you to other reports. The first one is other reporting required by government auditing standards, and there are a couple of other reports that are issued, and I'll talk about those in a minute. And there's some reporting required by Oregon minimum standards, and we'll get to that as well. So following my report, I see some smiles here. Maybe I'm going too slowly. I'm going as fast as I can.
No, you're doing a great job.
You're better than I cleared the room. You have an audience.
They haven't, they haven't all run out yet, so that's, that's good. The next part in the comprehensive annual financial report is management's discussion and analysis, and this is management's part. It's not ours. I always like to refer people to this, though. If you're not going to spend, you know, eight hours reading through every page of this thing, which is about what it takes, management's discussion and analysis is a great, great place to spend some time. It does give you a good overview of things. It prevents some comparative information for you to look at and so forth. Now, the basic statements themselves start on page 16. There's really nothing real new in the format this year. You might remember the format changed a little bit last year with the adoption of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statements Number 63 and 65. It's just changed a little bit of wording. Excuse me. No new pronouncements this year, so nothing, nothing really changed much there. And I'm not going to talk about the statements themselves. I'm not going to talk about the footnotes, again, unless you all have questions, in which case I'm happy to go into them. But if there aren't any, I'm going to skip all the way back to page 144. Excuse me, the next part of this that's actually mine. The independent auditor's report required by Oregon state regulations. There's some things that the state requires us to specifically look at in terms of compliance. This lists those areas that we look at, deposit of public funds, et cetera, et cetera, and anything that we found. We had one very minor finding in our sample of 60 students that we looked at were absent more than 10 consecutive days. There was one that didn't get withdrawn quite in time. Small finding, but we're required to report it as part of our obligation under Oregon standards. And that's it for the comprehensive annual financial report. And I would move into the single audit, so-called, or, eh, we call it the single audit on the cover, OMB circular A133, whatever you want to call it. This is the part that's required by the federal government because of all of the federal grants that you get and expend. We have a couple of reports in here. They look similar. They're slightly different. The first one's really over financial reporting, so it's internal control over financial reporting and compliance and blah, blah, blah. Cut to the chase. The good part is down at the bottom of that first page where it says, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be material weaknesses." That's a very good thing. And on the top of the next page, the end of the paragraph, "Results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported." Again, another good thing. And let me go on to the next report, and then let me make some, some comments. The next one is compliance for each of the major federal programs. Report on internal control over compliance, report on the testing of compliance. Talks about your responsibility, our responsibility. Again, the good part's down at the bottom there. In our opinion, the district complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements, et cetera. Internal control is over on the next page, the third paragraph down. "We didn't identify any deficiencies in internal control over compliance we consider to be material weaknesses." And finally, we report on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. The good part of that is the last sentence, "In our opinion, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is fairly stated in all material respects," blah, blah, blah. It's very unusual to not have any findings in the single audit. I mean, I do a lot of these, so I can tell you that Cherie, Cheryl, the whole staff deserves a big pat on the back, especially in organizations. I mean, in an organization this size and with this complexity, to get through without any findings is pretty remarkable. And for those of you that have been around for a while, you know that in some prior years, we've had some findings and stuff. So it's, this is a good year. It's a great thing. Let's see, there's some other things, but I think I won't, I won't, I'm just going right over that. The last thing is the letter to the board. It's our required communication. We're required to communicate these things to those charged with governance. That would be you guys in this case. What we're to communicate is prescribed by professional standards. You know, frankly, there's not much in here that I really want to talk about. It's mostly pretty standard. Well, the one thing I might talk about, new accounting standards that are going to come into effect in the future. into effect in the future. There's one we've talked about a little bit in some years past, and I will mention it again because it's going to hit this next year. Gatsby Statement Number 68 is the one where you're going to report your PERS liability on your statement of net position for the first time. Nobody knows yet exactly how big that number is going to be. We've, there've been some statements from PERS that they hope to let everybody know by the end of the year, which, let's see, I think it's the nine. Kind of running out of time, but hopefully sometime soon, you'll get an idea of how large that number will be. It will change the look of the statement of net position. Some people, some governmental entities, it's going to change the look a lot, maybe for you, maybe not so much, because you did do some pre-funding of PERS liabilities when you sold bonds in previous years and set up side accounts and so forth. So, hopefully, it's not going to be a huge number, but it will look different. You should be aware it's coming, so.
When we did that this last year with the PAT contract, we also, we did the actuarial in relation to some of the PERS and liability that we have associated with that. So, we saved some money there, and our side account on our PERS refunding bonds, both the one we did a year and a half ago and the ones we did in 2003, in 2002, our side account has increased tremendously in this last year, which will greatly assist us in the future on how we present the 68, which is our pending liability, how we present it on the balance sheet, in reference to what our liability will be in the future, because typically, we've only had to do a pay-as-you-go, so you haven't seen the full extent of how that will represent, and that's what 68 will do. It will basically represent your financial statements on a totally different basis. You'll look at it at the total liability instead of how we've kind of gone it one year at a time. So, that's the big difference in PERS 68 and PERS 67.
I guess the other thing people sometimes ask about, and just to make clear, this only affects the entity-wide statements, does not affect the fund statements at all. And it doesn't change any realities. It's just a recognition of what already exists. So, it's just a different way of looking at the way things already are. I don't have anything else. I'm happy to answer questions, but otherwise, I'm done. And again, thank you for having me. Appreciate the opportunity. Portland Public Schools is a good organization for us to work with. Appreciate all the work Cherie and Cheryl and everybody else, the whole staff does, and appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gillette. We appreciate having you come each year to tell us, talk to us about this, and appreciate your work with our staff. We know they do a really great job, so.
They do.
So, other board members' questions, comments? No?
Well, then.
It's pretty straightforward, isn't it?
It is.
It is. You bet.
Well, frankly, you want the report from your auditor to be pretty boring.
That's how it counts, yes. I know that. I'm fully aware that we want it boring.
You've done a good job.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I've done a good job boring you, thanks.
That's okay. I cleared the room last time. You kept the audience.
Everybody's still here for you, that's right.
That's good.
Take note, Cherie.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will now consider Resolution 4995, acceptance and approval of the comprehensive annual financial report, reports to management, and report on requirements of the single audit at OMB circular A-133. Do I have a motion in a second?
Some who.
Second.
Director Morton Moose and Director Bot Belile, excuse me, seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4995. Ms. Houston, public comment?
Yes.
Okay, any board discussion?
I just want to, again, express an appreciation to staff. This is really complex work, and I know we've been at it for a year or two, but, that being said, it's really easy with all those numbers and all those spreadsheets to get something off, and I just really appreciate staff's hard work to keep these books clean and fairly stated. And thank you to our auditors for making sure that we're on the right track.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Others? Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 4995. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed abstentions? Resolution 4995 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student Representative Jaws Wall voting yes.
Yes.
Great. Thank you again for being here and for such a great report. Let's give them a hand. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our continuing discussions on enrollment and As a reminder, last month, the board received the recommendations from the superintendent on aligning our enrollment and transfer policy with our racial educational equity policy. The board held a town hall on this subject on December 1st, a public meeting on December 2nd, and a public hearing tonight before this meeting. Will take an hour tonight for the board to discuss the proposals again. And Superintendent Smith, is there anything else you'd like to add before we get started here?
Yes, just briefly, so the staff this weekend, this is largely for the audience because the board received this, but I wanted to let you know the information that we provided to the board prior to this discussion, and then tonight is really reserved for board discussion with staff available to respond. But we provided information about the petition process and how it worked and how it's worked historically. We provided information, playing out more scenarios, and particularly for the impact of focus option lottery changes. So, one of the most significant things that came from Sackett to me, they had three recommendations, one of which was moving free and reduced meal status from a weight to a preference, which was significant in terms of the impact that it has. Second thing was a recommendation to do a geographic balancing factor, which did not go forward in my recommendations largely because of its impact on sibling preference. And then the conversation you've heard most significantly in all of our testimony has been which order then do you take the free and reduced lunch meals or meal status and sibling preference, which has been the biggest item of discussion and where we've done a bunch of modeling, what happens given past history, what happens given, you know, future scenarios of who may apply. So, that's been largely the discussion, and we did some more modeling on that for the board. But the biggest impact or in terms of alignment with the racial equity policy was really moving it from a weight to a preference, which has a significantly higher impact. So, just to say that one, it, what is part of the recommendation, and now we're into a further level of distinction. The third batch of materials were a response to the request of what would be a marketing plan and outreach plan to support focus option schools, which was another piece of the recommendation. And finally, information about preliminary budget adds that would be for the year, the current budget year, so things that we would bring forward as budget amendments in January, depending on what parts of the policy actually happened. So, the board got that packet. And then finally, a copy of our existing educational options policy, which outlines what the review would look like for our focus option schools. And all of this is available on the website. I'm sure the board's going to ask questions about it, but it was a lot of detail they just received to inform their discussion tonight. And John Isaacs and Judy Brennan are available for further dialogue on these topics, should the board want it. And with that, it is over to you guys.
Thank you very much, Carol, and thank you to staff for preparing so much information for us. I know it's an ongoing request, but it really does help us, and we really appreciate the work that you guys put into that, so. Just to, and Roseanne, is there a clicker? Yeah. Okay. So, this weekend, Sunday afternoon, after I'd had some conversations with my co-chair, Ruth, we, and with some of staff, we had some, I sent an email out to all of the board members that had to do with where I thought we currently were. And that included some of the things that Carol just talked about. One would be that I think everybody kind of thinks that, yeah, we're probably in agreement on a focus, review of all of our focus option programs. We also, I'm seeing in my conversations with people, just some interest in eliminating the lottery for neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers, that one as well, and expanding the petition process, which is why we've asked Judy for more information on the petitions, which was very helpful. And I think one of the most important things is the promotion of our focus option programs across the district, because we haven't really done a very good job of that, and in some cases, we've actually asked them not to. So, I think that's a good idea. And then there's some specialized recommendations that we are, I think, kind of in agreement with. But I think that the most important thing that I don't, that I think everybody here agrees with is the change of free and reduced lunch to a preference from just a waiting. That's going to be a big difference for us regardless of how we end up with our sibling preference or our, regardless of how, what order we put them in. The fact that free and reduced lunch is now a preference is going to be, make a big difference in all this. So, what I asked board members to do was to look through what I had sent out to everybody and then think about it, and call me or email me if they wanted to, and then we're going to discuss it tonight. So, that's kind of where I see we are. I'm not, I don't, I'm sure each one of my board, or my colleagues on the board, has other ideas about that, but that's kind of what I was thinking about. And so, I'm asking each of you to look at that, to think about what we did there. And I actually had staff, am I going to do this right? That one. Ha. So, here's the current recommendation for preferences. Again, that means that there's a preference now for free and reduced lunch in addition to co-enrolled siblings. And then, oh, these were some of the options that I threw out to my colleagues about how we might look at this in different ways. And all of us are all over the board talking about this stuff. That's why we're continuing to talk about, that's why we're continuing to take public testimony, continuing to get emails. But the first one is a preference for siblings of current students with, within a co-enrolled category, with the percentage of slots for free and reduced lunch being above the sibling The second one was grandfathering siblings of current students, so that siblings of current students in 2014, 15 were first, then the preference for free and reduced lunch, then any other co-enrolled siblings. Another one, preference first with commitment to review, co-enrolled siblings, preference for students eligible for free and reduced lunch, up to the district-wide average of overall slots. And it says annual review of preferences based on new access to free, full-day kindergarten, because we know that's going to affect how, where students end up, and marketing information to make larger population. And also, not on here is the work that staff is doing on a petition process. That, I think, should apply, and I think we all agree, applies to every one of these ideas, but there was one that's missing. Did we miss?
You missed number one.
Grandfather siblings.
I think the second one.
That's it, okay.
Well, the first.
You missed one.
Oh.
Well, the first one. The first one is the superintendent.
First one is the recommendation as it stands, yeah.
It's just not up there, okay. So, with that, I'm just going to open it up to everybody, and if people have other ideas or comments on this or on other things that I talked about sooner, then.
Maybe just the process point, that in terms of the timing, that we want to be able to go out for our first reading next week.
Right.
Right. So, what we're trying to get by sort of, trying to clarify where folks are at, is we, in order to, between the first and second reading, the second reading would be in January, if there's a substantive change, then we would have to start all over again.
Right.
And the whole process, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to make the window that we're trying to make in order to enact whatever changes we're going to do for this coming year. So, what we're trying to get at is to try to land on something that has support.
From a majority of the board.
At least a majority of the board, so that we know going into the first reading that we're pretty solid in support of that, so it's not going to substantively change during, between the first and second reading, forcing us to restart the whole thing.
Right. Hence, my reasoning for putting out what I thought we were all pretty much in agreement on, and then just narrowing it down to the.
Right, which is really helpful.
The things where we're just trying to hammer out the last pieces, so. Comments? Board members? No comments? Steve, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I don't see up there, though, one that would make a difference between language immersion, the two language immersion programs and other.
I think they already have, because they already have a different preference and waiting system, I think from the beginning, they were going to be a different. I'm looking at Judy to confirm this.
So, hang on just a second. So, what exactly are you, what exactly are you looking?
Well, I was suggesting that the language programs had the co-enrolled siblings first.
Okay.
And in terms of the other, in terms of the other programs, I, if we're going to make those changes, I thought we should have some way, and there's a difference here because the language programs, I think that they're critical to have the siblings enrolled, and the other programs theoretically, my understanding is that there are programs that are saying, if you're going to Da Vinci, you've got an interest in art. Well, maybe your second sibling doesn't have an interest in art. And so, I think there's a little difference there between those two categories. And so, the other one, I'd like to, you know, suggest maybe that we think about having a, if your other sibling does have an interest in art, then maybe you get a preference, and you have to demonstrate that that's the case, that that's the, kind of the way that I was thinking if we want to go the other way. I don't.
So, just to be clear, there aren't any preferences for art at Da Vinci. It's just a lottery.
Exactly, but, but, which brings you to the next point, is there's no preferences for, are there sibling preferences at Da Vinci, though, correct? Now?
Yes, there are.
Okay, so.
No preference around what you're interested in art.
And then we're trying to say that you keep the sibling preference behind the free and reduced lunch, and I'm saying that in that case at Da Vinci, that you would have a sibling preference if they were interested in art. I don't know if we're, I mean, are we, do we have a, are we creating, and I think this is one of the questions that I had two weeks ago for the superintendent, are schools like Da Vinci and Odyssey, are those built around students', students', interests, or are they just things that we threw out there and are out there, and you can flee your neighborhood school by going that direction? I mean, it's, which is it? Which are we, really having established, to my way of thinking, which it is. I mean, for me, if you're going to have an art school, you're going to have a history school, you're going, you should have children who are interested in art or history in that school, and that should be the types of children we're trying to draw to. But if that's not the case, then we're just giving people a chance to get out of their own neighborhood? I mean, how does that, what is our thinking, what is your thinking behind that? That was a question I had two weeks ago.
So, actually, I'll say this is part of the point of doing the review, that's really looking at what's the stated mission of a school and what's the current, how are we operationalizing adherence to the mission that was this, you know, stated purpose for starting a focus option school? And I'm tracking your recommendation here as being, that we're really saying focus options are interest-driven schools or particular educational model that wouldn't necessarily follow, that it could be an interest of one sibling in a family but not of another, and it, this is, most of the focus options are with that in mind, in terms of it's a, it's a type of a.
Right. I think that's exactly right. I think it's, that's why it's so important to adhere to our existing policy, which calls for that review, and that's, I mean, I think exactly what that means.
Yeah, and I just see a difference between the.
And the language.
Focus option and the language, and there's a, I mean, it just comes out differently to me. I'm not, yeah, I like the review.
It's a good fifth option.
We should be, we should be reviewing that.
Right. So, your suggestion was with the language programs, co-enrolled siblings first, is that what you said, Steve?
Yes.
And is that co-enrolled right now as in a grandfather status?
Co-enrolled, no, it's co-enrolled, period, going forward.
Okay, all right.
So, that's number four then, maybe?
Basically, I think that's number four.
Oh, I'm sorry, number five.
Number five.
Number five.
Well, I'll just, I'll just leave it in.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I mean, I am firmly in support of the superintendent's recommendation, number one, and I, you know, just in looking at all the members, and again, I really want to appreciate staff, all the extra work they put into the additional scenarios and the memos and information about the petition process and outreach, that was very helpful. So, I mean, and I did additional crunching of numbers in my own amateur way to try to kind of wrestle with different scenarios and what would happen over time as the numbers of free and reduced students increase and so forth. And I guess, both in the original recommendation and then my additional working with the numbers, I'm just not seeing a negative impact for siblings. I totally recognize the concern and the value, absolutely. I totally recognize the concern and the value, absolutely. But to me, it is so essential and it will best align us with our racial educational equity policy to put in place the superintendent's recommendation. And given that I'm not seeing a negative impact for siblings as a result of it, but to me, that's the best way, that's what we should be doing.
Okay. Others?
So, I think I'm basically landing on number four. And, for a couple of reasons. I think that we can have an equity policy that coexists with respecting and supporting keeping families together. One of the things I've been thinking about is if you, if you, when I, when I look at our focused families and when I hear from our focused families, I, I believe their testimony that they would like to have their schools be more diverse. I believe that they want to welcome low-income and more diverse families. What I worry about is if we put the free and reduced first and the sibling preference second, then all of a sudden, that sense of welcoming and wanting and working with us to actually try to achieve the policy goal could get undermined. Because families might become more concerned about whether their kid, their next kid's going to get in versus another kid. Whereas, if you keep the sibling preference as it is, I mean, I think there's really very little difference between both, but it's just how the families and the schools are going to be interpreting it. But if you, if you keep the sibling preference first, I think you're going to actively see our focused school families embrace this change and I think we're actually going to see the change happen faster. So, when I look at, when I look at the Sackett recommendation, and I totally respect everyone on the Sackett committee and the recommendation that you brought forward to us superintendent, I don't look at this as throwing away your recommendation, the Sackett recommendation. I look at it as accepting 95% of what was there. I mean, really, the big things are that, I mean, first of all, we have to all recognize that next year, for the first time, we are going to have free full-day kindergarten across the district. And I think that's actually going to have a significant impact on what happens with our focused programs anyway. So I think that's worth remembering in the back of our minds. But what we're talking about accepting is that we will be eliminating the neighborhood-to-neighborhood lottery process. We'll be evaluating our focused programs to make sure they're actually doing what we are hoping they're doing. We'll have full-day kindergarten throughout the district, which is going to help us. We're switching the free and reduced from a wait to a preference, which is going to be huge. We are including a free and reduced preference up to 45% of the enrollment of the school, which is huge. We're moving from, you know, lottery to a stronger petition process. We are respecting that special ed kids should, and their families should be able to stay together. I think the recommendation includes increasing, increasing the ratio of native speakers at both Richmond and Ainsworth. Again, I think that those communities would look forward to that change. So I guess my sense at this point is we're talking about a whole lot of changes and we're stuck in this one, in my opinion, relatively minor one, but it means a whole lot for some. And, I don't, I, I guess I would ask that we consider moving forward with number four and stating in the policy that we'll do a review in two years and see how far we've come or if we've come far enough and whether we need to come back and take a look at it. So, the only, the reason I can get to four is because it says with a commitment to review. Because if it turns out that we haven't made the kind of progress that we're hoping to make, then we do need to come back and revisit it. But I think we're going to get there with all of these other changes that are being recommended. And I don't see that we need to, in my opinion, disrespect families by creating the instability and an expectation that, that your kids can't attend the same school, so.
Mina?
Yeah, I'm going to go, I agree with number one, mostly because somebody earlier said we could go full out or we could do it halfway. And I think that this just really shows our support for really creating an equitable, equitable system for all, kind of going along with our discussion earlier of setting a tone. I think this would really set a tone that we are really moving forward to commit to all of our students. And I think this is just a good way to show our community our commitment to every student and that we really believe that these students who historically have been underserved really have a chance to get into those schools. And I think that it's more about setting the tone as well, which is why I agree with number one.
Thank you. Others? No? Tom?
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, I think I've been pretty clear that we can do both and we should do both. And so, I mean, I, I would be comfortable with four or, four or five. And, totally agree with all the Sackett's work, because Rita pointed out, she's, she's bullish. The guts of this whole proposal is about making our neighborhood schools great. And, and, and this proposal, whether, whatever you land on, one through five, that's still going to happen because of the, of the really the great work and the meat of the proposals that are part of this. So, I'm at four or five.
Matt?
Thank you. You know, I've been relatively silent in our conversations, trying to, trying to absorb the testimony and the opinions and the perspectives that so many people have shared, both here and, in our hearings and in our town halls and in our emails. And I really greatly appreciate that. There are, I think there are moments in time when we have opportunities to, as I mentioned earlier, set the tone, make a statement, make a, what I would consider progress. And, and I think this board, and I think this district has historically not lived up to those expectations. I think that continues to be repeated in the stories of both clusters and communities who have been disenfranchised, have been, I, I, set in a position to feel less than. And, and we heard that loud and clear last week during our conversation, our town hall conversation at Jefferson High School. That is not the beginning or the end of it though. This occurs around the district. I think we have to be very, very motivated to make change right now. And I, I think with respect, the number four, the number four option up there, which states a commitment to review, to too many of our community members, too many in certain clusters, feels like a pretty empty promise. And, it does to me. Because frankly, the next time's the first time. And I, and I think we have to, we have to manage ourselves in a way that is reflective of a true sincere commitment towards our racial educational equity. That's the direction that we clearly gave, clearly gave to the superintendent, who clearly gave to Sackett, who clearly provided a very intensive process to their discussion and as a, as, as a result, created recommendations to the superintendent, who has now provided those to us. This is what we've asked for and this is what we got. And I think we have to, we have to move forward with recommendations that will perhaps create discomfort. I think we can mitigate some of that discomfort in how we operationalize this, this implementation. I think we can. But I think we have to be true to the recommendations that provide us with an opportunity to, to move the, the capacity of this, this organization in this district to best serve our students. And, again, I can't say, you know, on the, on the heels of, of a, you know, a first reading of a resolution that supports our, you know, intentionally supports our, our black male students in our district, this is one of the, one of the ways we can do more than just make a statement, this, or make a, you know, nice resolution. This is a way we can, we can push this district into policy practice that, that improves outcomes. And I, you know, I don't want to ramble on, but I, I feel like, too like...
It's okay. No, it's okay.
We have an hour.
Okay. No, thank you.
You don't have an hour.
I don't have an hour. But the, my, my feeling, my feet are firmly planted in the superintendent's recommendations. And I feel like that's the best, healthiest direction for our district to go.
Greg, did you want, do you have anything to say?
No.
Yes, okay.
Not sure, not sure how I feel about the applauding. It feels like a yay, 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 part of like, it feel, it doesn't feel good to me, I'll just say that. Partly because it implies winners and losers. And I really think that the options here have for the most part mitigated losers. There aren't losers, I don't see. I think that there are advantages to one or the other, and that's what we're hearing expressed. And I, I've appreciated the expression and I've, I've heard a lot and I've learned a lot from much of the testimony and I appreciate that. I appreciate the superintendent's recommendations, what you've brought forward, and the Sackett's work to make sure that the best opportunity we have to align our racial equity policy is the superintendent's recommendation. But co-enrolled siblings is a, is a challenge to me. Because people have asked, you know, has anybody done any research about other districts? And I've been, for the past two years, been reading a lot about other districts and what they've done and how they've done it and what they've done. And co-enrolled siblings is a challenge everywhere. I'll just say this is not unique to us, because everybody recognizes the value of family. Not necessarily, everybody recognizes the value of family. And oftentimes, what happens is people, regardless of how people feel philosophically about it, the reality of a parent being split between two schools is very, very challenging. It interrupts, it interrupts people's day. So even if people are philosophically in favor of something or against something, it almost doesn't matter because it's about whether or not you can function. So I just, the, the co-enrolled siblings is, is something I'm, I'm still wrestling with. I, I see, I can't say I don't see differences, but we've seen so many scenarios. What if it's 60%? We got, we saw one today that had 3,000 applicants. What if 3,000 low-income applicants had? So there have been lots of modeling, lots of different options, lot, lots of hypotheticals, some of which, well, there's a fallacy in that one, well, and there's a fallacy in that one, and there's, I mean, they're models, right? Everyone comes with some kind of issue. But when I look at what, what we understand to be our current reality, I, I don't see in the next three or four years, a significant difference between one and four. So then, how do you decide between one and four? To me, it is going with the recommendation that aligns us with our current policy, which is what you had set out with Sackett to give you the recommendation for. And so, I don't want to say for no better reason, because it's a good reason. But because I don't see co-enrolled siblings suffering under that, at least for a couple of years again, there are many things that are going to change in our city over the next four or five years and there may be a whole something that we didn't anticipate. So, I'm going to throw a 1A in and say, I would be in favor of superintendent's recommendations with a commitment to review. How did, how did we do? Did we, did we in fact see a really big increase in low income? Did we get out of whack? Did all of a sudden, a whole bunch of siblings not make it in, which, which I think would be informative for us on whether or not... I still say, and this really relates to what I think, Matt, you were saying about the operas, operal, operi, operationalization of this, is really about this petition transfer process. So, that's where I want to spend more of my time on, while not throwing away the decision about whether or not it's sibling preference first or sibling preference second. But right now, I'm, I'm leaning towards the superintendent's recommendations.
Could I just add? I would totally, I mean, I, I think I assume that any of these would have a commitment to review and make sure that no matter what, we, we're not having unintended outcomes that we can adjust as we go. So I would totally support your, your 1A.
Right. I think I said that when I was talking about the slides. No, 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 it's okay. Every one of them, because it only comes out under number four there, so I understand that, yeah. So, but I think we've all been pretty clear that we want to have a regular review of all of this, so. So, I am very similar in my thought process with just about everybody here, because I think we're all thinking about the same thing, we're just coming out in a different place on it, so. And first of all, I want to say, I think that it's, the fact that we are actually looking at this is great. And, the fact that we're actually considering moving free and reduced lunch to a preference is a huge step. It's a big deal. But, for me, it's also very important that we have strong families in our schools. And, for a number of reasons. One, one of the best, biggest ones being, particularly in focus option schools, I know this because my kids went to focus option schools. The family really builds that. I think somebody said it tonight, you don't really have a neighborhood, you are from all over the place. And so, your community becomes that, that group that you are working with to make the school successful. And, you want to do that for your whole family when you're in... Now, I also had students, my students went to three different schools at one time. Not because they were in, but that was because of their ages, you know? So, all of us are used to dropping the kids off at different places and doing different things. So I understand the, the difficulty if you have to do that. But I really, I think that we have to consider the importance of family in all of our programs. I was in a school today and there were, I was there for opening bell and all families coming in, bringing their students. You know? No bus in that, no busing at that school, all families, all coming in, bringing their students, all hanging out, all talking to each other. This is a huge piece of our schools, to have those families in the building, so. And I also think that I'm interested in the marketing piece, I think I mentioned it earlier. I think that we have, we have not reached out to families in our neighborhoods to see if they are interested in the focus option program. And at the same time, we want our students to stay in their local neighborhood schools. So we have kind of a push-pull here. We want our neighborhood schools to be strong, we want our students to stay there, but we're also going to market our focus option programs to every family and pull them out of the neighborhood. So, we have a little push-pull here as well.
Well, I would just, but I think really what, what staff is looking at is specific and culturally responsive outreach to underserved families, not district-wise. So that would be a difference. In the past, it's just been, hey, everyone, here's these choices coming...
Well, in the past, it has been, don't talk about your program.
No, actually, there was the fair and those things.
Well, three years ago, remember? We did away with that, remember?
I know. So what I'm saying is, what we're talking about now is using the equity lens on that outreach. So it's not, the idea would be...
Exactly.
Yeah, so it's different than, the tension is, is, I think Sackett's recommendations and the superintendent's response is to, to adjust that with a, with an equity lens.
But most of the neighborhood schools that we're looking at are schools that have a large population of students with free and reduced lunch. Those neighborhood schools that we're trying to strengthen.
Right.
Right. So, so to me, that's coming in and out from both directions.
But I think part of the issue, that, part of the, the problem has been though, that the focus options have tended not to draw those students. So as a result, we've ended up with largely white, middle-class families dominating it. I'm saying it's just a different...
Because we're not pulling the students out, we're not wanting them to leave their neighborhood school. school. We're saying the same thing.
Okay.
I think, but maybe not.
Okay.
Anyway, um, so the other part of it is, so the marketing piece, and I think I talked last week about, um, my concern about the outreach piece, and then also making it, uh, possible for those students who are on free and reduced lunch to actually get to those focus option schools that are around the district. The one difficult piece is transportation, um, especially for, uh, free and reduced lunch families, to get their students from North Portland to Southeast, or from, there was a woman here who spoke from Odyssey, all the way over to Southwest, if you want your student to go there, so. Um, so I, I think that just, um, myself, I think that just our change, and all the work that we've done thus far, the Sackett work as well, um, and moving a free and reduced lunch to a preference is a big step for the district, and will make a huge difference in these programs, only if we market them, only if they come, only if we provide opportunities for students to get to the schools. Then it will make a huge difference. If we don't do any of those other things, it's not going to make a difference, because the students still are not going to come. Um, so, in the end, I come down, I think probably in support of, um, having a sibling preference first, and a free and reduced lunch following, following that. So, others?
A couple of things that came to mind, and, um, one of the, one of the challenges that I've had in, uh, hearing this, and I haven't really been put, been able to put a name to it, but it feels like there's a, um, there's sort of this game of fear factor. And, uh, it's this, um, fear in whether, you know, it's an intentionally sort of placed fear out there, or a very real fear, I, I don't want to, um, put a judgment on that, but there's this, this, um, fear of a, a change. And we've heard testimony of a change in the culture of our school, and a change in, um, we're not going to get the kind of support we get if we make this change. And there's a fear in that, and I think there's a fear, um, even in some of us, if we make a decision, that in fact, the change will occur, and we, then it becomes an unknown. And, um, I think, you know, for, again, where I, where my mind goes is that, um, I understand the discomfort that change makes, um, but I also understand the need for us to create a new normal. And, uh, because right now, um, and for decades, and for generations of Portland Public School students, um, we have had certain students in certain neighborhoods, in certain socio-economic classes of certain races, who have not had an opportunity to experience things. And that's why I feel so, um, I feel so, uh, committed to the racial educational equity policy, um, and it, and the importance of it, uh, being implemented. I think, though, this new normal is, um, is different, but it's also, I think it's also different good. And I think we shouldn't be fearful of that different, uh, particularly when it is in alignment with things like the racial educational equity policy, particularly when it creates opportunities. And I know that fear, um, is very real, and I know that's a challenge, but I want us, and I think we need to, get to that new normal.
Great. I do too. I do too, and I think we can get there with any of these policies, so, Greg?
One's just a question for you, Pam.
Pardon?
One's a question for you.
Oh.
Um, you had referenced that, um, nothing's going to change unless we can figure out how to get students their access issues. Are, do I hear you recommending or supportive of adding transportation?
I think we have to look at it, absolutely.
Do you think that's, from what we know now, which is little, do, do you anticipate that being a likelihood?
A likelihood?
Yeah.
I think it depends on, um, my colleagues voting for transportation dollars for these programs. Like, you know, not that long ago, we used to have hubs where students would gather and get on a bus, and then they'd take them. Um, I don't see as much of that now, I don't know. My kids aren't that age anymore, I mean, they're in college, so, they can get there on their own. Um, but I know at one time, we used to have that, and, and we cut some of that back during our big budget cuts.
Right.
But, uh, yeah, I see transportation as being an important thing, just like I think marketing is an important piece, and.
And we'll bring you transportation potential options in the budget pro, during the budget process.
So I guess that's a concern I have, obviously, is that, um, looking at a governor's budget right now, that doesn't pay for, um, for K-12 education, I, I, I just think it's unlikely, um, that that's going to be possible.
But at the same time, if you, if you, um, if you want students who aren't through and reduced lunch to get to those schools, we've got to do something, they're not going to be taking three buses when in kindergarten.
Perhaps.
And that gets back to the whole discussion, again, about the review, as well as the, the PSU work around what are, what are the programs that we have, where are they located, should they be replicated, should they be relocated, and so forth? I mean, it's, again, part of that larger holistic discussion. But to me, in the meantime, this, this is the one, this is, as, as we all know, it's just one lever, but it's a really important one, both in terms of the actual operations of the district, and symbolically, in terms of, again, the tone we're setting, and how, um, how closely in alignment, and how, um, strongly we're going to adhere to our racial educational equity policy. So for me, the superintendent's recommendation does respect families, it does keep families together, it respects all families. And, um, to me, that's, the higher bar to me is that we are getting as, as closely in alignment with the equity policy as we can. We certainly commit to review from all aspects of this, right? We don't want unintended consequences for anyone. I'm not seeing those unintended consequences to, of negative, um, outcomes to be likely for siblings, I really am not, when I'm looking at it. If that were to happen, of course, we would move to address that, and vice versa, right? So, but to me, and given the history of this district, and the fact of, as, as Matt was so eloquently stating, you know, the so, the, the decades of not just in this aspect, and so many other aspects of the district, of families not being heard, their needs not being met, that we're now taking a series of affirmative steps, and this is a really important one, to address that, to be able to say, well, we won't quite get there, but we promise we'll come back later and fix it if it turns out that we still aren't getting there. I, I agree with Matt, that rings hollow based on this district's past performance, and just the way our society operates. We clearly have had huge amounts of, of pushback. I understand parents and, and staff are fearful of change, um, but again, I see the superintendent's recommendation as respecting and keeping stable all families, as well as these, these wonderful programs. So that's, that's where I come down, and I, you know, I respect that folks have different approaches to it, that we all want what's good for kids and for families. Um, but to me, it's really essential that, that this historic moment for the board, when we're making these other historic changes to this policy, that is clearly so flawed, that we, that we do the whole thing, that we don't do it piecemeal.
And I, I don't disagree with you, Ruth, we just have one small disagreement, so. And I don't think that the superintendent's policy is disrespecting families at all. The superintendent has a great deal of respect for our families, but we have to make sure that our families are happy in our schools, because that's what holds them in our schools. And I think, uh, having a student who, uh, having your family commit to a school is having your family commit to a school, and build that school, and be a part of it, not have, it's not your child you're committing, it's your family, to me, that's just to me.
So, so are you suggesting that we should change it to be a guarantee rather than a preference for siblings?
Well, it's a preference. It's, it will be a guarantee, it has been a guarantee all along.
And that's, I mean, that's, again, that's, if that's what we're saying, then that's a different, I mean, again, what we're trying to do is, is, is also hold that we have these, we have a whole population of our district who has not been accessing these programs. So I think, I believe that the superintendent's recommendation holds, holds these in balance in an appropriate way.
But, but the modeling doesn't show that there's a hundred percent of the slots filled by siblings, in anything.
No, and nor are they excluded, because we're going to be able to have.
Right. I know. So I, in my mind, we're arguing over very small.
We're arguing over.
Small, small things that, and I want to, I want to support, I want to make sure that our families are supported, and, and our free and reduced lunch families are supported as much as our, all the other families, so. It's a support for every family, not just families who are not on free and reduced lunch.
So I guess what I'm saying is that because, if you're seeing that it's so similar, when you say, well, why not just go with number four, I'm saying, why not just go with number one? Because.
Obviously, we know that.
I know, but the reason for that is because what goes with number four is, and we promise to come back and fix it in the future if it doesn't work out.
That goes with number one, too, you just said it.
It goes with all of them.
You said it either way, we're going to do it.
Can I finish? I know, I know. So, but what we're asking for, to accomplish with the review of number four, is that we will elevate or, or, um, highlight or make sure that we attend to the needs of low-income families versus, um, oh, I'm, yeah, versus in number one, we're saying, we want to make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences for a more privileged community. Well, we've been acting in that way for twenty years, right? So I think the likelihood that we're going to come back and make sure that a more privileged community's needs are being met is very high.
I don't think that's what the, uh, yearly review is looking for, not to see that we're, to me, it's to see that we're getting forty-five percent of our free and reduced lunch families in the school. And I will be jumping for joy when that happens.
Right, I guess what I'm trying to say is, just in terms of the district's processes and priorities, and what gets heard, and what gets acted upon, again, like Matt was saying, it rings hollow to say, we won't quite get in alignment with our racial educational equity policy, but we promise to come back and fix it in the future.
I don't agree, we're not in alignment with number four.
Yeah, and Ruth, I would say, we're, uh, this, this proposal, whether you're number one, two, three, four, or five, taken in entirety, we're totally in alignment with our, our racial equity policy.
I think that.
And, and, so, and Matt, I mean, I totally understand what you're saying, and my only comeback is, is, we can do, we can do both. We can, we can celebrate families, and celebrate racial equity and access, uh, and, you know, this is about access to education, and it's not only about access to these schools, it's about access to every kid for good education. And that's where the whole neighborhood school thing comes in, and, and the review of these, and my hope is, is that the review of these focus options, um, entices us to, to go put some of these programs in our neighborhood schools. Um, you know, I, I mentioned lifting the Caplin Benson, I mean, it's, it's all about, how do we, uh, get more options and access to, to our, to all of our communities? And this does it, so. I, I don't buy the notion that it's an either-or, I just, I don't.
I'm not saying that it's an either-or, what I'm saying is, that number one does do both as well, and I'm not understanding how number one doesn't do both.
And I'm not saying it's an either-or, I'm just saying it always has been an either-or. Um, and not just, you know, PPS doesn't hold the, uh, uh, isn't the only, uh, organization in town that has made decisions that have benefited a few. Um, decisions across our city, across our county, I mean, these are, you, you don't have the disparities that you have, including in education, without there being, um, either an intentional, intentionally ignoring, or in, in oblivion to, uh, the conditions that exist. And what I'm suggesting is that we know what the conditions are that exist, and we need to take action to, to move it forward. Is it an either-or? I sure hope not, but there's no evidence that I've seen that says that there's a possibility otherwise. If there, if I can, if I can get an assurance, more than a, well, let's, let's have a commitment to review, because again, I think that, that does ring hollow, and I apologize, but it really does.
It doesn't make me uncomfortable, but.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think that's, that certainly is your, is your truth. It, it may not make you, make you uncomfortable. I can point to entire communities and neighborhoods that that terrifies. And for good reason, because each and every year, that's the promise that's made, each and every year, that's the promise that's broken.
We're, we're about to implement, uh, a, a complete package that, um, that fulfills a promise, um, that the board made prior to when I was on board. But I'm, I'm very well of the history, so, we're not breaking promises tonight, or tomorrow, next, whenever we do this, we're fulfilling promises.
Steve?
Yeah, I, I agree with Pam that you can, uh, you can go forward with, uh, you can go forward, and it's best to go forward to allow the sibling preference at the top, because you can't correct that, you can correct the other, uh, because once a child's held out of that program, that's part of the problem with those two language programs, you hold somebody out, and that's it, they don't get back in. And once they're out, they're out, because you can't enter in at different spots, that's another reason I'm really supportive of the sibling preference, but the, that's, he, that's not what I want to say really here. What I really want to say is, that if we're going to stay true to these recommendations, this is a small portion of this. This is a huge change throughout the district. I can list twenty other things, easily, right off top, boom, 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 that I think we do, that do not meet our equity policy. Let's start with the testing, the way we deal with the testing. That's so, I'm, I'm one of the founders of an organization that believes that that testing is racist, the way that we test in, in, now in Oregon, and the way we implement it and push everything. Let's talk of, we, I can go right down the line with twenty things that we're doing, that we should be doing differently, that are racially, and that are equity-wise, not done the way that we should be, that doesn't fit it.
So because of those, we?
No, no, and I'm not saying because of those, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that if you want to sit and talk about it, fine, I'll give you a list, and you can support them all.
I, well, I.
But you're not going to support my list, that's what I'm saying. Are you going to support the, exactly, that's what I'm saying, everybody, that's my point. Everybody kind of comes down in a little different spot on this. And I come down in a spot that, okay, the testing, okay, the, uh, the, uh, almost all of the reform movement in America is basically inequitable for people. It creates the incredible inequities, and millionaires back running, uh, running, uh, Pearson Education, make hundreds of millions of dollars off our children, and they create all these inequities that take place in, in schools all across America. So let's come out on that. The fact that we doing, that we're doing scripted, that we're doing scripted presentations, highly inequitable. You don't do scripted presentations over at Forest Park? You have, the fact that we, that we take teachers out of the schools, and we take them out of the schools, eh, eh, in, in our, in our focus priority schools, but we don't take them out in our schools that aren't for, uh, focus priority at the same time, highly inequitable stuff. I mean, we can, I can make twenty arguments, if we would like, that, that are way more inequitable than sending, than, than, way more inequitable than sending, well, this is the time we're supposed to bill, discuss this, right?
But not twenty tonight, right.
But we're supposed to discuss this.
But we're discussing, we're discussing the policies.
That's what I'm on, that's what I'm on.
It's not all of the other inequities in this district.
No, I'm on the policy, because we're going to vote on it.
Not all the other inequities in this district.
We're going to vote on it down the line, but, but.
Tomorrow, next week.
The idea that we pull these kid, these teachers out of schools, and so if you go to school in, in a focus priority school, you might not have your teacher there sixteen days officially, where if you're up here at, uh, some school that's not focus priority, that's in a, uh, your, your teachers aren't pulled out. Well, that's inequitable, incredibly inequitable, and it's directly, it's directly inequitable towards children of color, towards children who are poorer, poorer than other children. I mean, the inequities abound. I'm not saying that does, I'm just saying that we can talk about all that stuff to the same, I think it's way worse than allowing three or four kids to go with their sibling preference and inequity. We're, we're really actually damaging, we can see the damage we're doing in one case, and the other, it's, nah, okay, are you with me on, everybody with me on the S back, and with me on, on putting these teachers back into schools, and with me on not having schools, pulling, uh, schools for late openings, way more in, in neighborhoods that have more underserved kids? Or we're all together for doing that? The answer is, I'm sorry, but we're not all together, are we on that?
Not, not today.
Exactly.
We're not talking about that today.
But that, we are talking about that, that's what I'm saying.
Just that little bit, that's the small, we're going to talk about that.
I, I have a question for Carol. In terms of the budget stuff, which we're, we'll deal with on, in January, but, but we have a piece next.
So what you have is, um, information that was specifically, if, the things that we would propose adding in the budget amendment in January, depending on what it is you agree to in terms of the policy? Yeah. And, and it's a projections.
Yeah, so, I'm just, uh, who, in your organization, our organization, who, who's overseen the focus, uh, schools now?
So, the focus option schools right now are each overseen by the senior director of each cluster, and we don't have like a focus option person. Um, we're, we're proposing that the review process would be conducted through the, um, We're, we're proposing that the review process would be conducted through the system planning and performance office, so that we'd add a person who, that's specifically what they're tasked with.
And, yeah, and so-
And we'd set up a review schedule for reviewing the focus option school, doing the focus option review. Similar to what we do with charter schools right now, and, and alternative schools, we do do those processes for those schools.
And who does that?
Charter manager and our multiple pathways person.
I'm just curious, I mean, it's a hundred thousand bucks. And so I was just curious, is it, do, is there a way we can do that without another full FTE, was my question?
I mean, it's, it's a time-intensive process to do, yeah.
So Steve, can I just go back to one of the things we were saying earlier, before you were talking about the smarter balance resolution that we all unanimously supported? But the, you made a statement, and I'm going to make sure I got this right, you said, we, we can't fix-
Yes, I'm sorry, it wasn't the smarter balance, but we, we're, again, we're all, we all came out, but it's how we're dealing with it as a district that I'm concerned.
So you said something, I think what you said was, we can't fix the sibling piece, but we can go back and fix the free and reduced lunch piece, because if one sibling doesn't get in, then that's, then that's damaging to that, to that family.
You can't repeat, repeat that thing.
Right, you can't get back-
Put that sibling back in, you could add more kids of free and reduced lunch.
Right, no, I understand that.
Might be some specific kids.
And I guess what I'm seeing in the superintendent's recommendation and in the numbers, is that I think there was, one sibling would not have been placed across all of the schools in one of the three years. And that's where I'm coming out with saying this, I do not see a negative impact for siblings in this proposal, because what we know and what we've heard from staff is absolutely there would be either, you know, an additional slot created or a very easily approved petition because of this one exception, right? So to me, that's something that absolutely can and would be fixed, you know, immediately by staff, and certainly would be caught in a, in a review process or during the actual kind of lottery process itself, if it started bubbling up. We would hear about that, and I know we would take action about that. Versus, and again, to me, it's, we can fix, I, I guess I'm just seeing that we can fix that easily just as well as we, if we say we can fix the free and reduced lunch later. It's, to me, just again, based on the history of this district, it's, it's always kind of a later, it's, we promise we'll take care of it. We have an opportunity now to say, we're going to hold both these in high value, we are going to do both. And that absolutely, you know, if, if one sibling doesn't get in, of course, we're going to address that. But again, I'm just, there seems to be a, a sense that, you know, it's going to be this huge problem, and therefore we have to, you know, I don't think it's going to be, and I really think that we're going to be able to build in the safeguards to make sure that, that, you know, that families are supported.
Can I ask Judy a question here about this? So Judy, you provided data on the history in terms of reasons for petitions. Will you address co-enrolled siblings in terms of that as a petition, just historical data on that?
It would be my pleasure. It's a frequent request, in part because we have a number of schools that have been close to lottery transfers. So the petition reasons information that you got covered all of our schools, not just focus options. And so that's one of the reasons that siblings rise to the top, for, because there are many families who can't use a lottery to get there. So be two, about two hundred and fifty, two hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty of our, about approximately eleven hundred petitions a year are for co-enrolled siblings. That request usually sees, receives the highest priority that a principal can give to it. Principals will usually work to their greatest degree to find a way to place a sibling that they either didn't know about before or that hasn't had a different opportunity to seek admission to that school.
That's current practice.
Across the entire district.
That's current practice across the district. Well, it's the practice that we've seen the data available to use over the last three years.
So you have the, the, like, what have been the reasons for, right?
Right. Any other comments?
Well, it tells you how, how important sibling preference is.
Right.
I guess my, Pam, my, my thing I was going to say is, I guess the, I'm not necessarily as concerned right now about the, the current siblings. I'm concerned more about families looking at focus schools and whether or not they're going to actually apply it. They don't believe that it's a family decision. And I think you're going to see a lot of these, a lot less interest in these programs, and maybe that's the intention, is to just abolish them. I don't want them abolished, but maybe that's the, the intention, is just force everybody back to the neighborhood schools, so. But to me, if I was looking at one of these programs and I didn't have a, a strong sense that my next child would get in there too, therefore it's not a family decision, especially on the language immersion ones. But I think for a lot of the other programs too, it's a concern, so I think it would have a bigger impact.
But I guess I'm, I guess I'm still not understanding how, looking at this, I can get totally for that a change from the current is, is, causes fear. But if you, if we made this change that the superintendent's recommending, and just looking at how the numbers would play out, based on historic number of siblings who have applied, and given that there's a, a set aside up to a limit for free and reduced, I guess I'm just not seeing how, where that huge uncertainty to the point of not even being willing to apply to these great programs would come. Because again, it was, one sibling would not have been placed in one school in one of three years.
That's looking at historic data, not going forward.
Well, but are, are there suddenly going to be, is there suddenly going to be a huge-
Yeah, we're making massive changes here. We're making huge changes here.
But in terms of the number of siblings that would be coming forward, certainly there, we, we hope and expect there'll be a massive changes in the number of low-income applicants. But again, because it's a set aside up to a certain number, that's going to, there's going to be folks turned away after a certain point. Whereas we're always going to have the sibling preference, but we're not going to suddenly have, I think one email was saying, we're not, you know, families aren't going to suddenly have thirteen kids, so. And families do age up and out and into those other schools, right? So I was trying to, I was trying to project over time, you know, doubling the number of free and reduced, and then looking at how, you know, and also the grandfathering piece, if you have the attrition of the current families, which of course you never know exactly, it was just an attempt to try to model it out. And I was, again, no one was being turned, none of the, none of the siblings were being turned away. So I, I guess I'm just not seeing, I get that the transition and going from the status quo to something different creates fear and uncertainty right now. But I really feel like rolling this out and people seeing that it's, it's not going to have an actual impact on your ability to keep your family together, we're not going to have, you know, folks fleeing from our focus options.
And if you really believe that it's not going to have an impact, then why don't you just support number four?
Because number one is in better alignment with our racial education equity policy, from my perspective.
And I think we've had a policy over the years that we try to keep our families together, so I don't, you know.
It was a practice.
We can do both, right?
And we're doing both.
And a practice. I have a couple of questions. One, actually just a statement. Bobby, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, but you, you questioned the intention of whether or not the intention of these recommendations was to actually just shut down focus schools, and it's a fear I heard from some folks in conversations I've had. And I just, can you help me understand, like, whose intention do you think that, do you think this board is interested in the hidden intention, intention of that? Do you think the superintendent is? Do you think SACET has a hidden agenda? To, to raise that as a question-
No, I think that it will, I think that there will be a sense of instability going forward about whether or not folks will apply to focus programs.
Sure, but you, you questioned whether that was an intention of the recommendations. Who, who would have that intention?
I'm just asking the question. If we know that it might destabilize potential applicants to focus programs, then the question's out there. It's been asked. I'm not just, I'm not the only one who's asking it.
That's why I said, that's why, I've, I've heard it, but I guess when-
I don't believe it's the intention, but I think it could be interpreted that way, and I think we should be careful.
Yeah, I think we've done a lot of things that have sent a message of destabilizing across this district over the years, so, sorry.
Sorry, that was just a comment.
Was that your first, you have others?
I do. So the other piece is that this reminds me a little bit of a conversation with a school that we closed, Tubman Women's Academy, that for a couple of years, we had worked with them to say, you know, we need to get the word out, and they expressed frustration about not being able to market to other schools. But yet, in their last one year at least, if not two years, they hit every PTA and made sure that people were aware of it, and they were still unable to, to reach, reach the accommodations. And so I think Director Morton mentioned something about it rings hollow until, and he'd feel better with an assurance, so I have a thought. I don't think that I could get to number four, yes, unless we put in some sort of target. And that, this is partly, I heard some focus option schools in our discussion say, you tell me what I need to hit, and I'll hit it. So I think that in our resolution, that we can say, what is our next year goal for them? And in that review, if they are not at that goal, then perhaps it just automatically reverts to, to one. So we don't even have to vote on it, because what will happen is, if we don't hit the goal, or if we don't make some kind of effort, we're going to go through this process again, where we're going to have lots of families having to come out, bring all their kids, go through this destabilization issue, and we're going to have to have this same conversation with all this consternation. So if everybody just knows that here's the target, and if not, we don't hit that target, we go back to number one, that, that would provide me an assurance that that would work. And it would provide schools with clarity of what they're, what they're aiming for.
So comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I appreciate the creative and creative thinking. I guess my concern, or a concern with that would be just in terms of, given the, the time that we really are trying to make changes for this current year, to be able to come up with, before we've done a review of the different programs, to be able to come up with what those targets-
I agree.
Should be.
I was trying to find-
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Trying to find a way for me to get to the yes.
Steve?
I have a slightly different topic, which is exactly on what we're talking about, SACET recommendations.
No, we're talking about the superintendent's recommendation.
I'm talking about the superintendent's recommendations.
You're going to read something for us?
No, I'm going to, so, yeah, I'm going to pull this up, because this is a list of, this is things that I cut, brought out of the SACET recommendations, which have to, which talk about what we need to do if we're going to do their recommendations. And we've referred several times to how bringing the high school attendances back in kids going to their own high school. But we did some very specific things that made these, those schools better than they were before. And that's what SACET basically says in their recommendation. If you're going to do this, then you've got to make these schools better than they were before. And we need to have a, a plan that's specifically directed at school after school. We had a plan that was directed at Madison, we had a plan that's directed at Roosevelt. And this is sixty schools or so, maybe, it's not that many, but there's a handful of schools. And we need to have specific plans, what we're going to do. And last week, I talked a little bit about how we had to do, we couldn't do business as usual, we need to do some things. And so I'm very concerned that what we do is not more common core S-BAC. What we do is some of the things that are outlined in the SACET recommendations, where they talk about engaging activities. They talk about things that actually improve the school, more reading teachers in there, more resources and so forth and so forth, which I talked about two weeks ago. And so that, it's just a concern I want to note, because when we get to the budget process, I'm going to be asking that question over and over and over and over again about, okay, what, how does this help these schools, which we've now told people, your child must go to school in your neighborhood. If you're going to live in our school district, your child must go to school in our neighborhood, but we don't care if your school's good. Well, I never think that we don't care if the school's good, but we have not been as successful as we need to be in making sure that those schools have the resources and have a program and have staff and so forth that really makes them work well. And I think we need to think a lot about that, and I'm supporting the SACET recommendations, but we need to think about that way beyond anything that we have. And we need to maybe change courses too, on how we think about making those schools work. Because we're not, a lot of them are not doing a very good job, because we're caught up in the mandates as opposed to being caught up on how to make that school work. And we didn't get caught up, the high schools are different, because you don't get caught up in the mandates in high school. They're not spending all the time working on the testing, they have all these other classes and courses and so forth. So it's different with elementary schools and with primary schools particularly, and we need to look at that. And there's a lot of things we need to be able to talk about openly than we have about those things. So I'd just like to make that comment.
Mina?
Yeah, along the fear of not having enough applicants or people, I think that if we do our job well of outreach, which if we don't plan on doing it well, we shouldn't do it all, then we will have an applicant pool. It might be a little different from what it's previously been, but there's going to be an applicant pool of really diverse students, and I think that will just build the community even more at these schools. So I don't think we should fear not having an applicant fear unless we fear that we can't do our job well. So I think with that, we can maybe expect a different applicant pool, but I don't think we should fear that change. I think it's just going to build an even stronger diverse community within these schools.
Thank you. Greg?
Sorry, I forgot one note on my paper. I, part of what, again, I, I go back to number one for is because it, we are ending neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers, period, end of sentence, which means everybody that has a family member that was expecting to get priority, no longer does. And so we're saying to one group of parents that are in focus lottery option, well, you guys are lottery focus option. We'll continue to give you a higher preference or a preference. But all the neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers, you're just out of luck. And so that feels inconsistent to me. I'm, I, I'm still in favor of, of that, but it, it just feels more consistent to me to, to not give people who are already at a focus option school even more of a preference for, because it encourages, I think, people who might be in neighborhood-to-neighborhood to even do more focus option.
Bobby?
That statement didn't sound correct. I didn't quite follow it either, so.
Are you listening?
Go forward again.
So I'm going to double check with, with Judy, but my understanding, right, is we're ending neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers.
Right.
So that means if you-
With the lottery process, just the lottery.
Lottery.
So there's still, people can still do it with petition.
Petition. That's the same reasoning that we just dismissed option number one up here and went with option number four, because we didn't like siblings to have to enter the lottery in option one. What we're saying is for focus option schools, they should still get to lottery with the sibling preference first. And I'm saying that feels inconsistent to me. I'm not saying it's a deal breaker, but it just sends a very clear message to folks who are in focus schools versus neighborhood-to-neighborhood.
You're saying that they would have to go into a petition if they, going forward, if they wanted to say, but I want to keep my sibling here in the school?
Which is the reason why people-
Because we're grandfathering current students, but not current families who have transferred to a different neighborhood school previously. Going forward, I think, Judy-
Oh, okay. There is no, there is no preference for siblings who are going to just a different neighborhood school, is that correct? Or do they have to?
Yeah, you should do this one.
I think that was, that was in the list of hardships, is my recollection, so.
Right.
So jury triple L, if I understood correctly, your concern is that a family who enters the petition process to keep their co-enrolled siblings together at a neighborhood school doesn't have the highest level of, of preference that's in a policy, like, the board has not set down in policy that their student will have higher preference than any other student for that seat. It'll be determined through the petition process. And even though we can see that there are lots of families who have done that, and most of them have been successful, it's not the same as what's there for the lottery procedure. Do I understand that correctly?
That's correct, and it's not even that it, that I'm recommending we create that policy. I'm just saying it was the reason why folks are lining on four, which is inconsistent to not stay with number one.
Okay, so let me just say that I hope that we all are not losing the broader picture and the excitement that we have around all of the work that we're doing for, for enrollment and transfer. And again, thank you to SACET for bringing forward all these recommendations. But, but let's remember, you know, we, we, we're doing a focus option review, which will be great. We're eliminating the lottery for neighborhood-to-neighborhood transfers, we're expanding the petition process. We're doing promotions for focus option schools, we're working with our special ed students. We have a preference for free and reduced lunch. I mean, we're doing a lot of really intentional things. We're actually, to me, we're being very intentional about free and reduced lunch. I mean, this is a big deal. So let's, as we're all discussing this, let's remember all the good things that we're doing with this policy. And although we, not everybody may be happy with our final decision, try and focus on some of the really great things that are going to happen out of this, because it's going to be great. So with that, I think we're ending that piece, okay? No other coming?
Well, you are, but you're-
Superintendent Smith?
Well, only in the, in terms of guidance to the staff of what the policy is, we're bringing you back for your first- for your first reading. We're still in a pretty, actually Director Beal, I probably don't have a clear sense of where you are, but-
Which one?
But you're split. You're still split. Director Beal, I still don't know where he is. You're, where are you, number five? Are you on number five?
I was four.
He's four.
Oh, you're on four, okay.
I was on four, there were four people on four.
So we're four to three.
Four to three, okay, gotcha.
Okay, anything else? Great, thank you. Oh, Greg?
Sorry, yes. I thought I saw interest in possibly a four A, I'll say four A again, where we had a specific target that had some automatic triggers. Was I wrong in that?
So you want to talk about that some more?
I'm just interested to see if there is somebody that would be interested in it.
Were there others who were interested in that?
Majority interested.
I mean, I think, I think if it's a, if it offers us an opportunity to create some accountability around how we, how we're actually intentionally recruiting and bringing students into, into these schools, I absolutely think that target is appropriate. I think the next question is what that target would be.
So target for, target for number, excuse me, target for the number of free and reduced lunch students who would be in the school, is that what I'm hearing from you? Is that yours or?
What would the number be, I think is the question.
Well, the first, you know, forty-five percent get in, so applying is, yeah.
Well, right now, we're not even having the applicants, so.
I know we're not having applicants, so. Judy, you're shaking your head. Give us your staff opinion on this.
I am listening intently and want to make sure that we understand. So if you go with four and you have a situation like we did at Winter Haven a couple of years ago where seventy-five percent of the applicants for the kindergarten class were siblings, that leaves twenty-five percent of the applicants who could get in would be for the students who qualify for free and reduced meals or Head Start. Now, if what you're asking for us-
Can I just ask you a quick question on that? Of those seventy-five percent, were any of them free and reduced lunch students?
Um, no.
No, okay, thank you.
And I think only two of them had actual lottery numbers that would have, if it was just a straight lottery.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's right, but I'll double check. So if I understand correctly, that could happen, but you would look at the applicant pool and you would say, well, our target for Winter Haven was forty-five percent free and reduced meals applicants. And they had forty-five percent, but they only got twenty-five percent of the slots. So then you would change to something else because of it? No?
So I would say that it's reasonable, for example, in year one, to increase your free and reduced lunch count by X percentage enrolled at your school or-
So like a thousand?
That, right, or that you had to be at twenty-five percent. If you weren't at twenty-five percent, then clearly the policy change didn't work as intended. And therefore it would revert back to a switching of preferences. It is a built-in accountability trigger.
So can I just ask, is that not the same as, say, phasing in? The, up to the forty-five percentage of your first tier, like phasing in over a series of years?
It is similar to that, but because what I'm hearing from colleagues is they're interested in number four, which does that, I want to build in some accountability that, that our review doesn't then languish for another year and a half after that, which in case, if it was built into the resolution, we would just know that when we had those numbers, which direction we're going. And it would provide local, local schools with, with the target number that they're looking for.
Okay, so not forty-five percent, but something else that would be sad. And once you, if you had that amount of applicants-
Then the next year you have another target, I mean, we're aiming for forty-five percent, right?
Yeah, and, but it doesn't affect the lottery order. The lottery order remains the same.
If you, if you reached your target for number one.
Wouldn't that be a disincentive for people to want to apply?
I just wanted to make sure that I understood. Okay. If there are other questions, maybe I can email you.
And I think that's what I'm hearing from colleagues is where, what number would we pick as the number?
I'm actually confused on the connection. So maybe, and we're not consulting tonight, so maybe you can go home and think about it a little more and communicate with us.
We do need to land on something for-
Right.
Well, it's, it's related to, let's say that next year, next year, we, we keep the sibling preference with first commitment, which is what I hear a majority of us saying. But it turns out that the focus option schools increase their free and reduced lunch by one percent. Well, clearly, our intended, our intention to bring equity to it, something did not work.
Right, and is that the sibling preference that did, that did not, that only got one percent there? Where's the connection?
Lack of outreach.
It depends, right.
So that's more, that's more of a problem around what we're doing. It's families, not, that's not the siblings' fault.
Right, but I think the, the issue is that it's-
That's the problem.
If the policy is in place as the incentive, as part of the incentive, that we need to be able to have. And what, I think what I hear you saying, Greg, is that it would revert, if we could figure out what that target could be, there would be the accountability so that it would revert automatically without going through this whole process all over again to having the free and reduced preference.
What, what I heard is that, for example, let's say that it's outreach. When I, when I'm talking with families from these focus options, they literally said, give us a number and we'll hit it. We can be in every school, whichever school you want us to be, you tell us that number and we'll meet it. So it's a way to engage the community in this outreach because if it's just up to central office folks or just up to a particular school, I'm worried that it'll be more challenging because we, we don't have the relationships that families would have with each other. So to me, it incentivizes meeting that goal for a whole community.
Can I also put out there, I mean, I haven't heard anyone talk about option number three? The grant, and you know, any of the grandfathering options? I, I can't get to number four, but I could potentially, as a compromise, consider where we would keep the free and reduced preference first, but before that, as a transitional piece, grandfathering the siblings of the current families. I didn't know if, if the folks thought about that.
Mina?
Yeah, I would feel comfortable with that, especially because the parents who have testified, most of them have kids in, and that's kind of what they signed up for when they put their first child in. And I think it's fair that they do get their children in because like they went into those schools with that intention. And I think if those parents get that, that's fair. But I think that then parents signing up in the future with their first child, they will go in with a different intention. And I think that might make it an easier transition from, like no, from full sibling preference to none. So I think that it seems fair to do that for the parents.
Thanks, but just to be clear, there will still be a sibling preference.
Yeah, yeah, but like that we prioritize free and reduced lunch over sibling preference.
Any other comments on the grandfathering?
I'm more excited about grandfathering than number four.
Yeah.
Grandfathering what?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I was just saying, I can't get to four, but we're- No, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I think that was my, my point of, I think there's a, there could be a strategy to mitigate some of the challenges around, around this during the implementation. I think that what that grandfathering might look like could be a part of the strategies.
Others?
I, I don't, I wouldn't be favored grandfathering. Because I don't think so. I just think four is the right thing to do.
Right. I would be willing to talk about three. Only in a testing situation. I mean, yeah. So with a, with a date, within what we're doing, a sunset. And then we go, come back and look at it again and see if there's been a, because in the end, I mean, my concern is all around the strength of the schools, the way families strengthen schools. I mean, so I don't know if I'm ever going to be able to get to anything that would do away with a sibling preference, but I'm willing to look at a grandfathering piece for it.
So that's an interesting, I mean, rather than just talking about review, which has been the language we've been using so far, but to introduce into this a sunset.
I don't know. You mean sunset, so-
Because a sunset forces a decision one way or the other, right? It's not just, we'll review it and we might take action or we might not, or we'll get some data and we may or may not pay attention to it. The sunset, if it's built in, then that way, so with number three, I think I just heard you say-
It's supposed to be a little bit different, yeah.
Is that you would, you would consider going with number three as long as we had a sunset built in so that if we saw there was an adverse impact, that we would be, it would, we could structure it different ways. But basically, it, it's, it's, yeah.
So it wouldn't be that we would see an adverse impact. It would be so that we could see that we can hit the forty-five percent number for free and reduced lunch with siblings. That would be the, I mean-
Yeah, and by the same token-
I don't see how siblings can be a detriment to the school.
That's not what I was saying. Yeah, you are, because what I'm saying is that there isn't an adverse impact to families being able to have their siblings be part of the program.
Right.
The adverse impacts are all, potentially all around. So what I'm talking about is any review or sunset would, a look at the holistic picture. But I, I think, I think I'm hearing four, people who would support that.
You're no on, you're no on three with a sunset. You are a possible three, yeah. You're just, you're being quiet. What do you think?
I think that grandfathering, everybody is fine. I think that having four is fine. I think, oh, I think four makes more sense, but if you can't get to four, then you better get to three.
We're at four, at four.
Yeah, so if we're at four, we're at four, that's the other thing.
That's right.
That's what I favor, but.
Okay. Bobby? Are you still, are you still strong four? Okay, all right. I'm stuck in hell again. So I'll, I'll cogitate on it. So, anything else? Anyone else? Yes, thank you very much, you guys. Really tough discussion and really good discussion. Appreciate that. So let's move on to our next agenda item, which is our workload committee. We have a quarterly update from the committee. These guys are just one of many topics on our board's work plan. Superintendent Smith?
Yes, so as part of our last contract, negotiating our last contract with the Portland Association of Teachers, we formed a workload committee to look at ongoing issues of workload. And we have Sean Murray, our Chief Human Resources Officer, Brock Logan, our Director of Labor Relations, and Lisa Kane from Portland Association of Teachers here to give us an update on the progress of the workload committee. So Sean?
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Superintendent Smith, I'm Sean Murray, Chief Human Resources Officer. I have with me Brock Logan, who is the Director of Employment and Labor Relations for the district and also a workload committee member. We're also expecting Lisa Kane, who is representative of PAT. And so we want to be able to provide her an opportunity to provide a report should she come in as well.
Is she not here, is she coming, Sean, just not here yet?
We don't know. We're expecting her, but she hasn't shown up yet.
So we could briefly do our conference reports while you guys just wait for a little bit to us. Do you reckon she's coming?
We can do that.
Sure. Do you know how to get hold of her?
All right.
Yeah, let's wait, let's wait.
See if we can get her here.
Thank you.
If we think there's a chance she'll come, that would be great, wait.
Somebody text her or something like that? Yeah, she's coming. Well, we're late. We'll go ahead and do our, there we are, go ahead and do our board member conference reports. Two of us attended conferences this fall. I attended the Council of Great City Schools and Director Beal attended the Summit for Courageous Conversations. We heard a lot about that Courageous Conversations tonight, which was wonderful. According to our board policy, we report back on what we learned or what we found out when we were at conferences. So I'm going to let Director Beal go first, talk a little bit about Courageous Conversations.
Great, thank you. And it was really nice to have staff come testify today about-
Did you do that?
No, I, I don't think I did.
Somebody did.
I, I think they probably saw it on the agenda and thought it was a good opportunity.
It was great.
So as you'll all recall, the Summit on Courageous Conversations on Race was held October 27th through 29th. There were two days prior, pre-summit sessions that some folks attended from our team. We had a really healthy team. I don't know the exact number, but it was a significant size. And it's really gratifying to see so many staff, not only invested in the work, but use their own professional development, many of them funds to go, to attend this conference. I've heard my colleagues sometimes talk about, or at least a colleague, talk about top-down professional development. And here's a great example of them deciding what, what's most relevant and most interesting and most useful to them in their, their teaching. And so it was really heartening to see the size of the group that we had in New Orleans. I want to highlight, I know that, I think it was two weeks ago, we got to celebrate Alma Velazquez for being recognized. And it's really interesting, the award is learning and teaching, and I love that they put learning first because really, teaching is about lifelong learning and instilling that, that love of learning. And that, to me, is really what I find this conference about, is realizing and taking a critical look at our own beliefs and our own, our own way of being, our own assumptions in the world so that it can inform our decision-making process, that it can inform our policy decisions, my policy decisions, I guess. And I've heard some folks sometimes express surprise that Courageous Conversations on Race, it's not an instructional practice. And as I, I see more curriculums rolled out or more direction in what folks should be teaching, this, to me, is professional development done right because it doesn't actually give you a pat answer. It asks you to do the work. And when I went through school to be a teacher, it was all about reflective practice. How are the decisions that you are making impacting your students? How do you most effectively bring students to the understanding of the learning? And some of that is by getting them to, to activate some of what they already know. They call it activating topic schema. But really, you have to understand what they bring with them so that you can engage them in a real and meaningful way with the content that you're giving. And this, this conference, this summit is just masterful at that. And when you're dealing with, or working with nine hundred folks from other school districts across the country that are engaged in the same work, looking at institutions, realizing what decisions are made every day in those buildings, regardless of whether it's from board or down to the custodial staff, it is really, really motivating, really educational. And to see how different people come at this work while still encouraging teachers to, teachers and board members, whoever's there, encouraging us to do our own work. Again, it, if, it is about our own pursuit of how do we learn and how do we best express, express ourselves and get to the outcomes that we want. The, the other thing that I guess I'll just say from, I, I got to attend a number of different sessions, but the two sessions I'll hold up for my colleagues that I really appreciated was working in family engagement and how it works with collective impact. And I don't know how many of you are familiar of the work of All Hands Raised is doing right now, but there's a lot of work right now around collective impact. It's about a whole community wrapping around and how do you engage your community in ways that are not traditional so that you're making sure that all the voices are heard and that you're building a system that actually serves all students. The other one was a really successful Indian education session that talked about, it was from Oseo, Minnesota. And they have, they have, the students that are in their Indian education, they have a hundred percent graduation. And it was really fascinating to hear how they were doing it. Oftentimes, Indian education provides some extra, extra funding for native students. And oftentimes, the strategy is that we're going to do some more tutoring, some more academic support. And what Oseo found is actually if you take those students and give them heritage experiences, so one of, one of the experiences, for example, is they went out for a week and they actually walked a trail that their ancestors had been forced to walk to a concentration camp at Fort Snelling. And they talked about what they experienced and what the pride was and what the heritage was. That is how they're getting to a hundred percent, is they realized they had to give them a cultural identity and a cultural value that was outside of just more school for school's sake. So I found those two really powerful and I offer it to us as we, as we think about how we're educating our students. And I guess another part that I appreciate about this, and then I'll turn it over back to you, Pam, is that what I, what I appreciate about getting the opportunity to go to this is it's participating in professional development that we're asking staff to do. No, it's not possible for me to participate in all the professional development that our staff do or have access to. But it's really, if we're going to ask our staff to do this work, then I think that we have to be willing and interested and invested in doing this work. So I thank my colleagues for providing me the opportunity to go. I would highly encourage anybody that has an opportunity in years' future to go. Thank you.
Great, thanks for that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, can I ask a question? Bobby, sure.
Uh, Bobby, sure. Um, did you find that there were very many districts who sent school board members this year?
Oh, good question. Um, I did. Um, it, it seems to be growing, which is fantastic, because, um, as I kind of referenced, that it's great to have so many different levels from school districts, because you can really talk about the issues at your school, both as how it relates to race and how you're educating students, um, across the disparities that exist across the country, but also a myriad of other options that many school districts are facing, so it's a great time to connect with them, that more school districts are.
Actually, I'm really glad.
I know that was one of the things, when I went, um, a couple of years back, I went for several years in a row, and I know I've, I talked to Glenn, we talked to Glenn Singleton on several occasions, said if you don't include board members, um, in this work, then you can have a superintendent who, you know, does all this professional development with their staff, and then that superintendent leaves, the next superintendent comes in, and you do something completely different.
Right.
So what, what we're doing, because we have board members involved, is we're passing policy related to equity, and we're setting budget priorities related to equity, and, um, and we're talking, um, about what we're doing, and I, it makes a huge difference. And so it had been a concern for many years, that we weren't seeing that many board members, and I'm really thrilled to, to hear that that's picking up. And I hope that more of us go next year. It really is an unbelievable conference. I know you've gone several times. I've, I've gone twice, and then last year, we, we organized sort of an affinity session for board members, and it was very unstructured, but it was really just so valuable to share that, from the board member perspective, um, what equity leadership looks like and the, and the challenges, as well. So powerful to be there with our, with our team.
And I'll say, actually, this year, there were a number of boards who sent multiple members from the same board, 'cause I actually sat with a couple groups of board members from other cities, that was powerful for them to be with their colleagues, so it would be-
Yeah, and I, you know, it's, it's a scheduling challenge, too, but now we have Roseanne on board fully, this, this coming year, we can-
Early warning.
Early warning, so we can get it on our calendars, 'cause we're all busy. Yeah, I know, that's great.
Well, we had, uh, I think we had saved, excuse me, I think we'd saved a couple of spots, and, and just the timing of it didn't work out for other board members, so.
Right.
And I've, I've never had the opportunity to go to that one, 'cause it comes so close to the Council of Great City Schools, so it's either at the same time, or directly after that, and, uh, you know, you can only take so much time off of work, so.
I know, I know.
There goes that vacation time, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Um, so just a little bit about the Council of Great City Schools, Superintendent Smith and I, Lorenzo Poe, who I saw back there in the back, and Joe LaFontaine and myself, we attended the Council of Great City Schools, uh, in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, not nearly as exciting as New Orleans, but don't, don't tell the Milwaukee people that.
They know.
They know. It's a great city, actually, it's a lot like Portland, um, so, no, I mean, it's a great city, just like us. Um, and, uh, so we all went, uh, a couple of days early for the pre-conference, which Superintendent Smith already talked a little bit about, um, on working on our implementation plan for our, um, Young Men of Color in Support of President Obama's My Brothers Keeper Initiative, um, with the chastisement from, uh, Mike Casserly, who's the executive director, that he gets a call every week from the White House wanting to know where we all are on our implementation plans. So that was kind of, yeah, so we, really was an incentive for all of those districts who attended to really work on those quite a bit. Um, just a little bit about the council, it represents about sixty-seven urban school districts in the U.S., and that means about, about seven million students. Um, of those, about seventy percent are eligible for free and reduced lunch, eighty percent are children of color, and nineteen percent speak English as a, a second language. Um, so, you know, PPS is the only urban school district in Portland, uh, or in Oregon, excuse me, and the council provides us, provides us an opportunity to meet with other school districts of our size, who are experiencing the same kinds of, um, things with their students because of our urban environment, and it's, it's really different for us than going to, um, local, um, events to share information. Um, so the other, I, I attended several workshops, uh, on the topics from principal evaluation to budgeting, to just everything. I facilitated a panel on social-emotional learning, and was able to talk a little bit about what we do here at Portland Public Schools, uh, with PBIS and, and Restorative Justice, and some of our, um, partners, which was great to talk about as the facilitator. Um, and at this time, I'm chairing the membership committee, so I participated in a membership workshop. There are always more districts trying to join the council, it's a pretty exclusive group, um, but we always have new people coming, especially, I think Greg and Bobby were both mentioning board members. It's always great to see more board members coming to these because of the continuity, the longevity of board members. It's great to see, um, and to talk to other people, to other board members from districts about what's happening in their district, and how their, how their, um, overcoming issues or new policies. Portland is always very popular around talking about our racial, educational equity policy. Uh, there are a lot of districts who want to talk to us and who want to see our policy, and want to hear all about how we, um, put that together and, and how it's working for us, so we're, we're popular. Um, and then the other thing is, uh, as a board member, I'm also on the executive committee, I received a, a number of reports, uh, done by the research council, the one that's, uh, I have not got a final on it yet, but I will come back and share it with everybody when we do, is the council has done, um, a survey on, uh, testing in all of the, uh, council's school districts. Um, the amount of testing, what you're testing for, is it a national test, local test, state test? Um, so they've done a survey of all those districts, and we're gonna see very soon what the results are of that, so looking forward to bringing that back, uh, to talk about. So, that's it.
Great, thank you for your work representing.
Testing.
Uh, testing, uh, testing, and Portland participated in that, so.
Good.
So, looking back at the workload committee, do we have-
No, Lisa.
Just the two of you still?
Yeah, Sean and Brock.
All right, thank you for waiting, you guys, just in case you showed up, I think that's important, so come on down.
Uh, like I said before, if Ms. Kane does show up, we'll provide her an opportunity to go ahead and provide her input as well.
What's your last name?
Oh, my last name?
No, not her last name.
Kane, K-A-N-E. All right, so, if you recall, the two thousand thirteen, two thousand sixteen collective bargaining agreement establishes a workload committee with the PAT and the district to consider options for eliminating workload for our professional educators. At the suggestion of the Human Resources Department to the board, and also the workload committee, quarterly updates regarding the progress of the committee and the types of workload issues would be provided to the board. I'd also like to note that Superintendent Smith has allocated a million dollars to, in the budget, to address potential workload issues for professional educators. Since the last workload committee update to the board, the committee has established standing meetings of twice a month, and the parties have entered into a memorandum of understanding that does two things. One increases the number of committee members from ten to twelve, that's six for the union, six for the district, and it also changes the reference of chief academic officer to, to assistant superintendent of school performance. So at this time, I will let Brock Logan provide the committee update.
Um, and I do want to just take a minute to point out that the committee's the one where the committee discussed this, so this update is truly coming from the committee, this isn't HR's take on what's happening. So, I'm very happy to report that the, we talked before about having an online forum where employees could, uh, PAT members could submit their request for a review of their workload when they felt their workload was inequitable. That is live, active, up and running. It is accessible to teachers and other professional educators on both the PAT and the PPS webpage. Um, we are still working through kind of a connection issue to get our Uniserv consultant to have access to a few of those, but, uh, we're getting there, but the main thing is the, the form is up and active and live and available. We have so far received eight requests for individual workload review. I would say that, um, a number of those actually point out kind of the, um, kind of the bigger picture or global work, workload issues. The topics that they've included are workload in special education, the loss or lack of funding to maintain the synergy leads, Medicaid administrative billing, and support for classrooms with large numbers of students and/or with, um, students in the process of being evaluated for special services. The committee at this point is not prepared to make formal recommendations, we're still in the process of reviewing information and gathering data, and kind of looking at what the big pictures are, but there are a few concepts that the committee has discussed in length and is comfortable coming forward and asking that the board can kind of consider those in your deliberations. So one, uh, when projects such as major system or system changes or IT rollouts or that type of thing are submitted for approval, um, the project should be required to include a plan for both implementation and ongoing support. Um, along those lines, the committee is supportive of IT's request for continued funding for synergy leads, or some other form of ongoing support for the synergy system in the schools. Uh, second, the committee, again, as a general concept, supports coordination of new initiatives between the different departments within the district, so there's just, you know, fewer things that are coming out, and, and often, you know, three departments put something out new and don't realize that three departments are putting something out new, and the people receiving them now have three different things they have to juggle. And finally, the committee is, um, very supportive of ongoing funding for substitute coverage or other resource allocation for teachers who are required to conduct one-on-one testing with students. So often, a teacher has to sit down with an individual student, do a particular test, whether that's for language acquisition or some other thing, and they've also got their other twenty-two or twenty-six, or however many kids are in their class that are under their supervision, and it's just, um, you know, the phrase that came up in the committee was you can't be in two places at once. You can't be sitting here and giving this child undivided attention and supervising twenty-two, twenty-six, whatever number it is, other children. So those are things that, um, the committee has discussed, and again, we don't have a specific recommendation, but those concepts.
Are there any questions?
Do you have a timeline for when you're gonna actually do some action out of this committee, where they actually make somebody's workload less?
Well, I will say that above the eight requests that have come in, and, and I would point out that the committee has really two charges. One is to look at the overall picture and see if we can come up with recommendations for pieces of work that can be reviewed, or elements that can be changed to reduce workload overall. So it's kind of a global concept, and then there is this avenue for individual review. Within the avenues of individual review, with a request we've received, one of those, the department it came from, when it came forward, they were able to resolve it, uh, so that one's been resolved. Um, I believe a couple of the others actually kind of worked themselves out, but it's kind of like, okay, so I've had this problem going on since the first day of school, it's finally resolved, so there's nothing to do at this point, but that's why, that's more of the global, how do we plan for these things? And, so even though it came in on this individual request form, what it really highlighted is an area that we need to look at on the global side of it. And then the other thing is, the committee did, uh, take specific action around the synergy lead piece, that for the grading day, I think it was November tenth, if I remember right, to fund up to four hours at, um, the hourly rate for the synergy lead in the high schools, just to help their peers, they needed help with the new system and getting grades in and all of that. Um, and it's, it's not clear that every high school accessed those funds, but that we, I know two of them have said that they have, so.
Did, uh, the part about the testing, the one-on-one, that includes like the ADEPT test, which is one of the major ones that we give on the ESL, but what about the DIBELS test? One of the things that we do, have seemed to be doing in DIBELS tests that are, that were maintaining that the teacher himself or herself has to give the DIBELS test, as opposed to maybe an EA giving that DIBELS test? I mean, that's kind of on the testing stuff. Are you looking at other testing things, like the, uh, have you started to look at that, or is that, are you punching that over to the testing committee?
Uh, no, so there has been some discussion, um, we've identified a number of the global issues to talk about, and that the impact of testing, uh, is one, especially with like the amount of, of, um, prep work teachers have to do before administering a test, especially a new test. How do we count for that? And we didn't, on the one-on-one testing, we didn't specify that to a single test, so I know ADEPT is one of them, um, I don't remember what it stands for, but ELPA is one of them, there's a, a number of, I don't know if DIBELS is one of them, but if it's a one-on-one test, or as a teacher, and that's why we say either ongoing substitute support for that, um, or some kind of other resource. And I, I will tell you that based on the last discussion, and this is not something that the committee is coming forward with, but this is my take on that discussion, so I want to be clear about that, that I'm not speaking for the committee right now, but a number of the things we've talked about, we get down to, if we could replace the educational assistance, the library assistance, the office support in the schools, a lot of what teachers, when they're telling their story, are talking about is there used to be somebody else in the school that could help with this or do this, whether it's duty, or, you know, any of that kind of stuff, and the loss of those aides in the school is one of the things that has a huge impact on them. So, so along the idea of if, on the testing, what we've said was, either substitutes, that's it, that's a solution that's been, that's been used on and off in the past, and one of the frustrations the committee has, okay, this comes up every single year, and every single year, we treat it like it's a new problem. So let's do something, let's have a plan for it, let's be ongoing and have a place in there. That could be substitutes, that's in the past been something that's been allowed, is put a substitute in the school to be with the class while the teacher's doing the testing, or other resources, so it's, but let's get a fix, to realize you can't have one person doing two things in two different places at exactly the same time.
And one of the things that we haven't done in the past was to communicate that you could get those substitutes, and, which they already had decided, last year, they said you could get a substitute for your ADEPT test, but it wasn't evidently, as I understand, it communicated to anybody, so a lot of people just went along with their thing. So the communication aspect is, uh, something might, you should maybe factor in as we go along, I would think.
Other questions?
Bobby?
So first of all, I'm just so excited to see this level of communication between the two parties, it's really, um, positive. Um, I had two quick questions. One is you, um, are looking to increase the number of committee members to twelve, did you explain why?
Sure. Um, in our last report, the reason for increasing the committee members from ten to twelve was to provide greater representation in terms of various issues and subject areas.
Okay. And then, um, of the million dollars that we set aside to allocate to this committee, um, has, has any of that been spent, or?
So, the allocation for synergy support at the high schools, that could have been up to eighteen hundred dollars. That's the only money that's been allocated so far.
So remind me again what happens, because we put that aside to be sort of a, a pool or a fund to address urgent workload issues. So remind me again what happens if those aren't surfaced, and does it revert?
No, I get to spend it.
Yeah, so a couple things, I mean, I think we would, we'll determine how much we're allocating next year, and do a similar allocation, so it's not like a rolling fund, it would be when we figure out a number that we put in the budget next year. But part of the point is also to surface things like when Brock's identifying themes that are coming up, is things that we would recommend in the next budget process, that we try and address systemically, so it's also trying to identify some of the systemic issues, and this is intended to be able to be responsive for immediate things, so we can resolve them as they're occurring.
What I would say is, the committee's still in the process of gathering information to review these requests, and one of the things that's come up on a couple of them is, the committee, so, so let's say on the individual request that comes in says, in this situation, we think we should fund an EA, and the committee could say, we're gonna fund that EA this year, and make a recommendation to the board that EAs should be funded for this. The problem is, right now, we know that it's a problem in that one classroom, in that one school.
Right.
And if we say, okay, great, you filled out the form, you get an EA, and then we find out there are eighty-five classrooms in this district that have the exact same problem, a million dollars doesn't buy eighty-five educational assistants, so, you know, and the same thing, if you, if you were to do something and say, okay, we're gonna put a million dollars towards X, because X will reduce teacher workload, and then we have new things that come in, and we're like, sorry, we've got nothing we can do about it. So it's, it's a balancing act, and really finding out, what is the impact of this district-wide? Is this a one-time, one-case scenario that we can fix this? Um, is this something that, this money will make a real difference now, and we can then come forward with a recommendation to change for the future? Or is it, you know, putting a Band-Aid on a large hemorrhaging wound?
Yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, Matt?
This is, um, probably just a reiteration, but I think it's gonna be really important, um, as we move forward in planning for next year's budget. I, we would, I, I would love, I think there, um, I'm, but there was a little bit of a slow start to this committee, and, and, um, I think some probably average, you know, uh, results, at least what I can tell, uh, but I think this is a place where, where some magic could really happen in, in creating, uh, both dialogue, how we, how we approach challenges collectively, uh, both from the district perspective and from the association perspective, and, uh, would, I, I want to do whatever I can, uh, in this role to, to help support that and direct staff, the superintendent and staff to, to focus on this is really an opportunity, and I- And I want to find a way to support that on the board in the budget process too, because I think there could be a lot, a lot of good that can come out of this, so.
Great. Steve, did you have some things?
I just was going to say that the million dollars should be spent this year on workload this year. And then next year, if we still enter the contract, be another million dollars. That's how it's, that's how it was set up. Not worry about the long-range thing about it, but let's get the money spent and the workload reduced. That's the whole point of it, in my opinion. It just seems awful slow.
I think Brock's point is really, is really well taken, though, that part of the value of this is surfacing those systemic issues and that we could have a situation where just because, you know, a small number of teachers happen to utilize the process, there could still be many, many others who needed it. So I appreciate that.
If I could just comment on Director Morton's comment now. One of the things I think, and I'm not sure that these committee meetings are open for anybody if they wanted to come see them. We'd probably, as a committee, have to talk about that. But if you were a fly on the wall during these committee meetings, I would suggest that you couldn't sit there and say who's from which side. It doesn't seem like their sides. It feels like one committee, the dialogue is one committee, problem solving, gathering information, looking for solutions. It's a really positive committee. It's fun to be on.
That's good to hear.
That's really great.
Sure. We all want our teachers to have everything they need, so. Okay, great, thank you, guys. So let's move on to our business agenda. The board will now consider the remaining item on its business agenda, having already voted on 4995. Ms. Hewson, any changes?
There is none.
Do I have a motion and second for the business agenda?
So moved, second.
Director Morton moves and Director Blau seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Any public comment?
No.
No. Any board discussion? Bobby, I think you've got something.
I do. So I think the only thing that we are actually voting on now under the business agenda is related to this purse bubble.
Yes.
So I had a quick discussion with Sean earlier and said I'm fine voting with this because it basically applies January 1st till June 30th of this year. And I can see that we have to do it. But I would like to request that we have a, that a discussion take place around this whole area. So as an example, right now, we have an incentive in place right now where if employees tell us they're going to retire early, we give them a little bonus because it allows us to be more planful. At the same time, we've changed our teacher contract, so we don't have three rounds of hiring anymore. And the reason we had that incentive originally is because we felt like there was some gaming in the system. And so I want to kind of look at that incentive again and see if it still needs to be in place. But the other thing I would say is, should we be incenting employees to retire on June 30th rather than on January 1st? And it seems like this is almost enabling and emboldening people to retire on January 1st. And instead of, it seems like it's opposite of what we should be incentivizing. And so I have some concerns about it. And I don't know that we need to address that. I just want.
But even just tee up the conversation?
I want to tee up the conversation. I'm not sure that this is a smart long-term.
So two points in regards to this issue. Based on years and age and years of service, the employee would be retiring. Essentially, with this MOU, employees would essentially be able to retire from work until the end of the school year. It assists the district in continuing the flow of having a teacher in place and not having the problem of trying to find a teacher to replace that retiree until the end of the year. And then also, in looking at.
And I guess I'm just asking whether we can incentivize that in a different way that might make more sense. I mean, clearly, we want our employees to stay through June 30th every year. So I'm just, I just want us to think it through a little bit.
We definitely can explore options with the incentive in regards to early notice of retiring. I mean, essentially, that helps the district understand where those vacancies are taking place. And essentially, we know ahead of time where we need to recruit. So that's one of the reasons why we have that incentive in place.
Agreed, but there was, there was another reason that we put that in place as well, so. I just think it's worth looking at again. So again, I'm going to vote for this. It makes sense. I'm just asking you to think it through a little bit.
This has been in place, this kind of thing has been in place for quite some time.
Yes, it has.
We've never had to change it.
Enable it.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Any other comments? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any, excuse me, anybody opposed, abstentions? Business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Joswell Hodie.
Yes.
Okay, the next meeting of the board will be held on Tuesday, December 16th, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.